Welcome, everyone. I now call the September 17th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson? Councilmember Aldurks?
Here.
Councilmember Kurd?
Here.
Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All here, all present, with the exception of Mayor Thompson, who is absent and excused.
Thank you. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, mute your microphone when not speaking, and for council attending remotely, use the raise hand feature when you wish to speak. I don't think we have anybody, any city council member remotely. Also, as we are in election season, I would like to remind everyone of certain campaign-related restrictions regarding public comment on ballot measures. Public speakers generally cannot specifically address a campaign or ballot measure at a public meeting or during the public comment period. RCW 42.17A.555 prohibits government agencies from allowing the use of public facilities directly or indirectly for campaign purposes. Allowing speakers to speak in favor of or in opposition to a ballot measure or campaign during a public meeting or during a public comment period would violate this prohibition. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Kyle Sanders, City Manager here. Item 6B under Projected Agenda Discussion is consideration of a community market request for proposals. This was an item that was requested by Mayor Thompson, and in his absence tonight, what I would propose is that we postpone that item until the October 1st meeting and take it up when he is here.
And we have to move?
As long as there's no objections.
Any objections? Excellent. Thank you. Public Engagement Opportunities. Puget Sound starts here night. Wednesday, September 18th, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., Post Doc Brewing at Post Doc Brewing in Kenmore. Learn how to protect water quality at this family and dog-friendly event. $1 of every pint sold supports Whale Scout's salmon habitat restoration projects. For more information, go to Bothellwa.gov/PSSHnight. Sustainability Mania. September 28th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Bothell City Hall Plaza. Our 12th Annual Sustainability Festival. Learn everyday sustainable actions you can take at home, work, school, and in the community for lasting change. Featuring live music, Touch a Truck, local artisans and businesses, crafts, games, and repair café, and more. For more information, go to Bothellwa.gov/SustainabilityMania. Business Insight Survey. Through September 30th, Bothell business owners can inform the city's first economic vitality plan and shape our future by taking 10 to 15 minutes to complete the survey. You can take the survey and learn more at Bothellwa.gov/BizSurvey. Now for the Proclamations. The first proclamation is Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. Whereas Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month is a month-long celebration observed each year, September 15th through October 15th, to recognize the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors are indigenous to North, Central, and South American, Mexico, and Caribbean, and Spain. And whereas the day of September 15th is culturally significant as the anniversary of independence of Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, while Mexico, Chile, and Belize celebrate their independence days on September 16th, 18th, and 21st respectively. And whereas, though the city celebrates our Hispanic and Latino community members and staff beyond this month, we take this opportunity to give extra recognition to their historical, cultural, and contemporary contributions to Bothell during this time. And whereas, we honor the invaluable ways that Hispanic and Latino Americans who live, work, and learn in Bothell influence and enrich our community, and reaffirm our commitment to addressing the barriers to opportunity that many still face. And whereas, the city is committed to fostering meaningful relationships with our Hispanic and Latino community members, and as such, is working to ensure that our communications programs and services are accessible to all our community members by developing a language access program to provide translation and interpretation for city staff engaging with the community. Now therefore, I, Rami Alcabra, on behalf of Mayor Thompson, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Bothell, and invite all to celebrate the rich diversity of the Hispanic and Latino communities and the many ways they contribute to our city. And we have some community members here to accept. I will come down and hand this off. Please join me at the podium.
Proclamación del mes latino y hispánico y latino del mes de heritaje, donde los latinos celebran durante todo un mes largo cada año desde septiembre 15 hasta el octubre 15 para reconocer la cultura, la herencia, y todas las contribuciones de aquellos antepasados que fueron indígenas para el norte, para América Central, y América del Sur, México, de Caribbeanes, y España, donde el día 15 de septiembre es significante, culturalmente significante como el aniversario de la independencia de países latinos como Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, mientras México, Chile, y Belize celebran su independencia los días de septiembre 16, 18, y 21 respectivamente. Could I make a correction? I'm from Chile, so I know that something there is not right. Chile doesn't celebrate on the 16th, it celebrates 17, 18, and 19, and that's it. Those are the three days that they have the celebration down there. Mientras nuestra ciudad celebra la comunidad latina, miembros y trabajadores de aquí de este mes toman la oportunidad de reconocer toda la historia cultural y contemporaria de las contribuciones que se han hecho a Bato durante este tiempo. Mientras nosotros honoramos las maneras de los hispanos y latinos americanos que viven, trabajan, y aprenden la influencia de Bato, y enriquecen nuestra comunidad, y reafirman nuestro... My fork got a water there. Reafirman la convención para dar a conocer las barreras y oportunidades que muchos todavía existen, que todavía tienen. Mientras la ciudad está comprometida para demostrar las relaciones entre los hispanos latinos y la comunidad de los miembros, como el trabajo, y asegurar que nuestra comunicación, los programas, y servicios son accesibles para todos los miembros de la comunidad, desarrollando el acceso del lenguaje programa que proviene, que les da interpretación y trans... a las ciudades de... para los miembros que trabajan en la ciudad, y así mantener a toda la comunidad envuelta. Ahora, yo, Mason Thompson, el mayor de la ciudad de Bato, proclamo que el septiembre 15 hasta el septiembre, hasta octubre 15, ese es el mes hispano para la ciudad de Bato, y también invito a todos los miembros para celebrar las diversidades de los latinos y de los hispanos, de las comunidades latinas e hispanas, y las muchas maneras en que ellos contribuyen a nuestra ciudad. Firmado este día 17 de septiembre 2024.
Buenas tardes a todos. Somos padres de familia del distrito escolar de North Shore, y pertenecemos a la escuela de Bothell High School. Agradecemos la invitación, y a nombre de nuestra comunidad, aceptamos la proclamación del mes de la herencia hispana. Como todo padre de familia, hemos estado presentes en la educación de nuestros hijos. Tenemos sueños y esperanzas de que ellos sean ciudadanos felices y formen parte activa en la sociedad. Sin embargo, hay mucho camino por recorrer. Con este reconocimiento, creamos un puente de conexión entre la ciudad y la comunidad hispana de Bato. Apreciamos la confianza que nos da el Honorable Ayuntamiento para tomarnos en cuenta y compartir nuestras culturas.
Good afternoon to everybody. We are family parents of the district, from the scholar district of North Shore, and we belong to the high school, Bothell High School. We are grateful for the invitation, and in the name of our community, we accept the proclamation from the month of the Hispanic heritage. As a parent, as a family parent, we are present in the education of our children. We have dreams and hopes that for them to be a good, happy... that they for a very active part in the society. But however, it's that very long way to recover, to cover. With this knowledge, we are creating a bridge of connection between the city and the community of Hispanic of Bothell. We are very grateful for the trust that you guys are giving us for having us participate and show our culture.
Como padres latinos, queremos crear comunidad y participar activamente en nuestra sociedad. Desafortunadamente, día a día aún enfrentamos retos de discriminación y racismo tanto en nuestras comunidades como en el entorno educativo. Urge que haya espacios en la ciudad donde el enriquecimiento de la diversidad cultural se promueva, donde nos sintamos seguros, bienvenidos, integrados en esta ciudad que cada día es más diversa. Confiamos plenamente que la preparación y educación constantemente de los padres hace que haya mejores ciudadanos. Somos ejemplo a seguir de nuestros hijos.
As Latin parents, we want to create a community that participate actively in our society. Unfortunately, day to day, we all have some discrimination, racism, in our community, as well as in the education realm. We need that we have some space in the city where the enrichment of the cultural diversity is promoted, where we can feel that we are sure, welcome, and we are integrated in the city that is, every day is more diverse. We have plain faith, completely faith, in the preparation and education, constant that the parents, that we have better citizens, and we are an example to follow for our children.
Nosotros como papás hispanos vemos la riqueza de nuestros hijos y queremos que crezcan con valores, aprendiendo español y se sientan orgullosos de hablar dos idiomas. Queremos que se sientan incluidos como hoy lo sentimos nosotros, y en el futuro sean impulsadores de cambio, innovación, y liderazgo. Agradecemos por abrirnos sus puertas en esta tarde a las familias hispanas, y permitirnos aceptar en nombre de la comunidad la proclamación del mes de la Hispanidad. Nos honra y nos hace sentir parte activa de esta ciudad, aportando y enriqueciendo más de la diversidad cultural. Estamos orgullosos de formar parte de esta ciudad.
Today, we see the richness and the importance of our children to grow up with valor in learning Spanish, and feeling very proud to be able to speak two languages. At the same time, we need that for our children that they will not forget their roots, that they feel proud and from generation to generation continue with the traditions. We want that they feel that they are included on everything, and in cambio, and any change, innovation, and leader. We are grateful for you opening the door to today, to the Spanish families, and allow us, in the name of the community Latina, to accept the proclamation from Hispanic month. We are very honored, and we feel very active in this city, feeling that we are giving some, enriching everybody with more, with a diverse culture. We are very proud to be part of this city.
Now, if we want to come down, we can do... Okay. I was going to say, thank you all for being here. We very much appreciate you. Appreciate our Latino and Hispanic community to be part of our community, and we look forward to doing better things with you, with your community here in the city of Bothell. And we'll come down. All right. For the next proclamation. The National Diaper Need Awareness Week. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not being able to afford a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy, can adversely affect the health and well-being of children and their families. And whereas, national surveys report that nearly one in two families struggle with diaper need, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend the available supply. And whereas, a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare and early education programs, which enable children to thrive and parents to work. And many parents struggling with diaper need report, with that, many parents struggling with diaper need report missing an average of five days of work each month due to insufficient supply of diapers. And whereas, without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention resulting in medical costs. And parents may be prevented from accessing childcare needed to go to work or school. And whereas, Bothell is proud to be home to trusted community-based organizations, including KidVantage, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families, and their work addressing diaper need plays a critical role in supporting families, improving infant health and well-being, and advancing local and state economic growth. Now therefore, I, Rami Alcabra, on behalf of Mayor Thompson of the city of Bothell, do hereby proclaim the week of September 23rd to the 29th, 2024 as National Diaper Need Awareness Week, and encourage all to support organizations that collect and distribute diapers to families struggling with diaper need, so that all children and families in our community can thrive and reach their full potential. And here to accept, we have some community members to accept the proclamation.
Thank you for declaring the proclamation for National Diaper Need Awareness Week for next week. It is an issue that is contended with across the country, as you've heard, but very specifically in our communities. Diapers are a basic need, and caring for kids when they are young protects their health and well-being, and promotes their healthy development as they grow older. Protective factors, such as providing concrete supplies in a time of need, are essential to building family resiliency and strengthening families in all of our communities. KidVantage has been here for 35 years doing just that, working with over 75 different partner agencies in central Puget Sound, where families can access diapers and other basic needs at over 270 different sites. So though we don't work directly with families and see them, we know that we are helping them by amplifying the services of other community-based programs, education organizations, health organizations, and such across our area. Last year, KidVantage supplied 2,413,95 diaper changes to kids in this area. We assisted 18,049 children and expectant and postpartum moms one or more times during the year, including with diapers. We expect to exceed 2.4 million diaper changes again this year, because that's what people need. You can't use WIC, you can't use SNAP for them, and as you heard in the proclamation, it can be a huge barrier for families building their own self-sufficiency and resiliency. So diapers are costly, diapers are needed, we're here to help, and we very much appreciate the long continuing support of the city of Bothell for families and KidVantage. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen, for helping fill this big gap we have in our community. All right. Last but not least. Puget Sound Starts Here Month. Whereas Puget Sound and the waterways that connect our mountains to the shore contribute to Bothell's economic infrastructure, quality of life, and our natural resources. And whereas, City Council's 2040 Vision for Environmental Stewardship emphasizes the importance of valuing and protecting our ecological resources. And whereas, water quality is a priority for the health and welfare of Bothell residents. And whereas, Bothell has joined with state agencies and more than 750 local organizations, governments, and tribes to engage residents in protecting and improving local and regional water quality. And whereas, Puget Sound Starts Here Month is an opportunity for the public to learn how they can help protect Puget Sound and our local waterways. Now therefore, I, Rami Alcabra, on behalf of Mayor Thompson, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Puget Sound Starts Here Month in the city of Bothell, and call upon all in our community to protect natural resources by reducing and eliminating sources of water pollution. Here to accept, Kristy Cox.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Deputy Mayor Alcabra and council members. My name is Kristy Cox. I'm one of the city's surface water program coordinators. My favorite thing about being in this role is getting to engage with our community members about simple ways to help care for our local waterways. This fall is full of opportunities to do just that, which is on the screen behind us here. So I wanted to take just a few moments to invite the community to these upcoming events. These are all listed on the city's website as well, on the calendar, so there's no need to take any notes. As mentioned in the council engagement slide, tomorrow is Puget Sound Starts Here Night at Post Doc Brewing in Kenmore. This is a family-friendly, dog-friendly event. There'll be interactive outreach tables for Puget Sound Starts Here and Whale Scout from 4 to 7. In support of the salmon habitat restoration that Whale Scout is doing, Post Doc is generously donating $1 from each pint to Whale Scout from 4 until 9 o'clock when they close. This is Post Doc's first community pint night since opening their Kenmore taproom in May of this year, so we're excited to be part of it. On Saturday, September 28th, we'll be at Sustainability Mania right here at City Hall, hopefully outside. I will be doing pet waste outreach, and some of our storm operations crew members will be helping residents sign up for our regional adopt-a-drain program. On Monday evening, October 14th, we're partnering with Snohomish Conservation District to offer a Living with Beavers webinar. If you have a beaver on your property or simply want to know more about them, you are sure to learn lots in this webinar. Saturday, October 19th, is Orca Recovery Day, and this year we are partnering with Friends of North Creek Forest for a Habitat Restoration Volunteer Event from 10 to 1. We haven't finalized the tasks just yet, but those will be coming soon. We are also finalizing details for a do-it-yourself rain barrel building workshop on Tuesday evening, November 12th, at the North Shore Senior Center. This is another partnership event with Snohomish Conservation District that we're excited to be able to offer to our residents. And finally, we want to know what Bothell residents know, think, and do when it comes to stormwater. We've been working with a consultant to create a comprehensive survey about stormwater awareness, attitudes, and behaviors, which we plan to launch citywide, excuse me, citywide around November 13th. The results of this survey will help guide our stormwater education and outreach efforts for the next five years. And I just want to end by pointing out that none of the events that I've mentioned so far are solo efforts. These events happen because of the partnerships that we hold with so many incredible organizations. I am beyond grateful to our local partners for their care, their dedication and optimism, and for inviting the Bothell community to be a part of something bigger. And I want to thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council, for advocating for water quality and for continuing to support these local partnerships.
Thank you, Kristi and our partners, for all the amazing work you do. And now to public comment. The city has accepted public comment in writing, as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members on our part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will take note of items requiring follow-up. City Clerk?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We did receive several written comments, and I'll just name the people. Jason Miller, these are all on Lot P's development. Jason Miller, Nick Robinson, Ashu Joshi, Martin Fectu, Michelle Cox, Christine Wickman, all wrote in regarding Lot P, and they are made part of the record. We also received written comment from Mark Swanson regarding tire dust, coho salmon, and soil. I do have several people signed up to speak this evening. And so before I call on you, I will say that public comments shall be limited to the topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in the speaker's comments being suspended. When your three minutes starts, the light at the dyes will turn green, at one minute left, it will start blinking, and at 30 seconds, it will turn yellow. First up, I have Ashu Joshi. And I hope I pronounce everybody's names correctly tonight.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for making the time to hear us. I've already submitted my written comments on Lot P. This is my fourth time talking about this, second time formally in front of the council at the City Hall. I actually applaud the decision taken by the city council on looking after the future residents of Bothell for affordable housing. Since I've already submitted my written comments, all I want to add while speaking is I hope you give due consideration for people who are already residents. Because right now, it feels like the cell phone company, which gives ads, "Oh, come on in, become a new customer, and I'll give you 50% off." And the existing customers still have to stick to the old plans. That's how I feel. The current residents are not being heard, but you are making room for people who do not live here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Christine Wickman.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. I am an old-timer here in these parts. This week, I celebrate... I moved here half a century ago this week. And I lived in Seattle for decades, and used to ride my bike to Bothell and Wood Mill every chance I got. I've seen a lot of changes. And I get the need for middle housing, high-density housing, and affordable housing. What I don't understand is, having gone to three meetings in the last week, two at the library, where council members were present who could respond to the community's questions, there are many frequently asked questions that have still gone unanswered. Like, why is Lot P being given away? Why has there been no fiscal impact statement to the community? Why is there no current fair market appraisal of Lot P South? Why is the most densely populated neighborhood in Bothell, which is also the hottest heat map, being asked to absorb 200 more units with little to no parking? Why was no RFP put out for other religious organizations and/or developers? And it's really hard to understand why it makes sense to put low-income residents in affordable housing, which makes it impossible for them to own a car to get to work. Getting to work by bus to many of the jobs that low-income wage earners have requires a car. And by forcing them to live there without a car, it seems to be dooming them to under or unemployment on a perpetual basis. Many of you have further political aspirations, and I just want you to know, our community appreciates your time and effort on the city council. We want to give you the benefit of the doubt, but we do not feel like there has been transparency in this process. And we are left feeling like there's a conflict of interest here, and would really like transparency. And I do appreciate your time. And I mean it when I say we really want to give you the benefit of the doubt, but we also want to be heard, and we want these questions answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Swanson.
I'm going to start out tonight the same way I have many times previously. I'm going to ask for the voluntary recusal of former and current BOP members that are members of not only the city council, but also the planning commission to voluntary recuse themselves, because I feel it's a violation of the Appearance of Fairness Doctrine, which encoded in the RCW states that even the appearance of impropriety must be avoided. Bothellites for People Oriented Places, they are a subchapter of StrongTowns.org, as identified by StrongTowns.org. And they propose to increase urban density to make communities economically resilient. Well, I beg to differ. There's no place in the United States where you can point to increasing urban density that makes anywhere economically resilient, climate resilient, or anywhere. It's a complete anti-science approach run by someone who's just a civil engineer. Not to denigrate the civil engineering degree, but it's not biology, it's not climate, it's not economic science. So Lot P is worth $16 million, and we're going to give it away. Pastor Kristen Joyner is a longtime member of BOP, going all the way back to at least 2019, when she was a deacon. I think this is an appearance of impropriety giving us away. That's my opinion. Now about parking. I look back through city records, and you know, I would just want to point out that the election was supposed to be an anchor retail shop with parking. 527 or Bothell Way Northeast was supposed to be parking from QFC all the way down to 522. It wasn't supposed to be a throughput. The University of Washington and Cascadia Campus, it was promised to the residents when we voted, "Okay, you guys can join." It wasn't supposed to have any residential parking, none. Well, that's changed. Or any residential living. Metro buses shed between 100 and 200 times more tire wear particles in a single-family car. Metro city buses, transit buses, they only carry between 40 and 60 people. Simple math shows you that these are not favorable to the sound.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Your time is up. Next, we have Mr. Lyman. Sorry, sorry. It says F. Lyman, I'm not sure.
Hi, thank you very much. Good evening, Deputy Al-Cabra and Bothell City Council. My name is Francesca Lyman, and I'm a Bothell resident, at South Bothell. And I'm here to speak to you about a critical traffic hazard at 96th Avenue Northeast Wayne Eadway. One minute, our friend and neighbor living in Village at Riverbend was walking to the park for her daily three-mile hike. The next minute, she was lying in the middle of 96th Avenue Northeast, hurled backwards by a car. Our Bothell community living near 96th Avenue fears for our safety because of the growing speeds and traffic volumes on this road. The city purchased the 89-acre Wayne Golf Course to create a beautiful city park. It's beautiful. But this road has become increasingly dangerous. The land changed from private property to a public park, but no accommodations were made for hikers, bikers, dog walkers, stroller pushers to access the park except by car. Thousands of cars, as well as heavy-duty trucks of all sizes, and now large metro buses and motorcycles exceed speed limits here, putting people at high risk as they cross the street to the park at a crossing there. In recent years, the road has seen multiple crashes, culminating in the grievous accident that seriously injured our neighbor and certainly could have killed her. It's a miracle she was alive. Such crashes are not isolated. Across America, pedestrian injuries and deaths spiked to their highest levels in 40 years, according to federal DOT figures. This year, Washington has seen a 10% rise, Washington State, in pedestrian fatalities. We therefore implore Bothell City planners to prioritize reengineering this road to ensure the safety of park users and reduce speeds at a critical curve where there's a crossing and where there have been crashes. Once a country road, now it's a busy suburban collector's street, and it's become a cut-through for cars, avoiding tolls and highway congestion. We're encouraged that because the road runs within the boundaries of this beautiful park that is going to be redesigned with the master plan. But we also feel that there is a real hazard here. We've had multiple conversations and communications with your city traffic engineer Jamal Mahmood about the critical safety issue here, and most recently had a face-to-face conversation with him on-site. But we've not heard back from him. We'll continue to converse with him, feel he's really making good faith efforts. But we feel it's important to bring this to you, to the mayor and city council, so that you're aware of it, because it's just a matter of time before another serious injury occurs. So we call on the city to immediately eliminate the hazards with some emergency caution signs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Paul Wickman.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Al-Cabra and city council members. My name is Paul Wickman. I'm a resident of downtown Bothell, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and many of my neighbors regarding the proposed development of Lot P South. We believe that this development not only represents a missed opportunity for thoughtful community engagement, but also directly contradicts several key priorities outlined in Bothell's 2024 Comprehensive Plan. An independent survey of Bothell residents published in May of '24 revealed two critical issues that should guide decisions about developments within our city. One, the lack of thoughtful engagement. And two, the lack of intentional planning. These findings aren't abstract concerns, but directly applicable to the situation we have right now at Lot P South. Our repeated requests for clarification on why local residents were not notified or involved in this dialogue have so far been met with silence from the council. A development of this scale and impact demands more inclusive and participatory process than we've seen so far. The council's decision to proceed without proper public engagement only reinforces the concerns raised in the survey and fosters further disenchantment among residents. In addition, the proposed development on Lot P South conflicts with key priorities outlined in the Land Use section of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan. First, the plan specifically acknowledges the health and environmental risks of heat islands and clearly maps this neighborhood as one of the hottest islands in the city. Adding more high-density development to this section, which already suffers from environmental stress, directly contradicts the city's stated goal of reducing the effects of global warming and contributing to a more sustainable environment. Second, another priority in the comprehensive plan is to strategically increase density in lower-density areas of the city. The area in which Lot P South is located already in the highest-density neighborhood within Bothell at 68.8 units per acre. Adding more units here contradicts the new plan's goal to distribute density more equitably, especially in areas that can better accommodate it. Third, the plan emphasizes the importance of developing infrastructure to support more sustainable, pedestrian-friendly urban spaces. However, the proposed development of Lot P South exacerbates existing issues with parking and congestion and does not contribute to a vision of sustainability. Instead, it risks overwhelming a community already grappling with these challenges, further compromising the quality of life for current residents. Developing Lot P South as proposed conflicts with these three items stated in the 2024 Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Wickman. Your time is up. That is all I have, Deputy Mayor Al-Cabra. However, if there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak, please step to the podium and state your name, and you'll have three minutes. If you are in the virtual audience, please use the raise hand function, and we'll panel you in. That is all I have.
Thank you, City Clerk. And now we go on to the reports section. Actually, before we do that, I just want to say I acknowledge public comment. I love hearing public comment. We can't have the discussions here, but we want to hear from the feedback, and we want to act upon that feedback at some point. So very much appreciate you all being here. And now to the reports section and city manager report. City Manager?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. We do have two presentations tonight under the Reports section. The first one is from outside guests from our King County Library System Partners. And I'm going to turn things over to our regional manager of the King County Libraries, Alice Darden, who's joined by Katie Boils as well to lead us through an update of what's happening at the Bothell Library. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Hi, Bothell City Council. It's nice to see you again so soon. I was here last week for Welcoming Week. That was fun. We have a little presentation here for you. So I'm Alice Darden, I use she/her pronouns. I'm the regional manager for the Alder Region, which includes the Bothell Library, as well as four other libraries nearby in the county. And I'm also joined here by Katie Boyce, librarian and information services manager, who also works at Bothell with me. And ordinarily, we try to come at least once a year to city council to tell you about what's going on at the library. Sometimes we sit in for three minutes for the public comment, but you've graciously given us a little bit more time on your agenda tonight, so we are excited to talk to you. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Thank you. So here's Bothell Library. I'm Katie, by the way. This is Bothell Library by the numbers. We, last year in 2023, our last complete year, had over 200,000 visits. That's about 85 visits per hour, so some really busy hours and some, you know, cold January evenings where there's not so many. and some, you know, cold January evenings where there's not so many. Almost half a million physical checkouts at the Bothell Library, 469,000, 17,000 computer sessions in 2023, and then for patrons whose home library is Bothell, so that's the closest library to their home, but they might utilize other King County libraries. Over, over a million checkouts to them, both eBooks and physical books, and over 28,000 active patrons. So that's a lot of numbers, and in the library world, that probably doesn't mean a lot to you, but we're really busy, and we're one of the best in the county. So there's Redmond, who circs a lot, a lot of checkouts at Redmond, Bellevue, that has a lot of foot traffic, and then we're like right under those two. We're with Samamish, with lots of checkout, very busy, but we're not quite the top, but maybe someday we'll make it with growing Bothell. Anyway, so that's Bothell by the numbers. Next slide. Thank you.
We also provided a handout with some more recent numbers for January through August of this year, as well as some programs, which we'll be talking about a little bit later. We wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a new collection with King County Library System, which is called Ready Reads, and this replaces a collection called Lucky Day, which had a green sticker on it, and another collection called Choice Reads, which was a bunch of paperbacks. And the benefit of this particular collection, which is new and featured, is that if you are on a very long hold list for a popular title, the latest from some very popular author, and there's like 100 people before you, if you go check out this display near the front of the library, you might find that book waiting for you on the shelf. So in order to keep those popular books on the shelf and available for people to just pick up, unfortunately, we do have to limit them to two per library card for a 28-day checkout with no renewals, but definitely check it out. It's a pretty cool new collection.
Okay, we're celebrating the freedom to read at the library every single day. But this year, we decided to have a special program called 1 Million Reads, but it went so well that it's now 3 million reads, and that's minutes. A minute counts as a read. And our library patrons were invited to keep track of their reading, either in an app or on paper, and submit that to us, and it will be entered into a prize drawing that continues this year through the end of December. And then we've also wanted to celebrate the freedom to read by talking about intellectual freedom in the community. So we've given presentations to various community groups, and what is intellectual freedom? And I'm going to read it so I don't mess it up. But it's a widely-held concept in libraries that people can access what information they want. It ensures that all community members have free, equitable, and confidential access to information, and it's a, it's a core value of the library, and it's something we want to celebrate at the library.
Next slide. Thank you. I also wanted to highlight another online resource that you may not be aware that the library provides called Press Reader. This gives you access to all, many of your favorite newspapers and magazines. I know that we have a lovely physical browsing collection of newspapers and magazines at the Bothell Library with cozy chairs, and you can browse those, or on your smartphone or device at home or your computer from home, you can use your library card number to sign into Press Reader or download the app, and then it gives you 60 languages, 120 countries, tons of publications to browse. Thank you.
Okay, a couple more resources that folks might not know about that they have access with their library card are language learning resources. We have Mango Languages. That's an app that people can use to learn many different languages, including English, and we also have Rosetta Stone. That's another option for language learning, and all you need is your library card and PIN number to access those. And then in person at the library, we have Talk Time, where volunteers from the community facilitate English conversation practice. It's very fun, and it has quite the following. Around 30 or more people come every week. We just moved the days to Mondays at 1:15, so if you want to see a lot of people having fun, drop by the library on Mondays at 1:15 at Bothell Library. Oh, next slide is me. And this is the, this is my, I could talk about this forever. So these are the Bothell Library highlights. I supervise our librarians that work at the Bothell Library, and they plan all the programs, events, and outreach that the librarians do. We have Reading with Rover, where kids can come and read to dogs to practice reading in kind of a comfortable environment. It's very popular. This summer, our teen librarian Catherine had a group of teens plan a teen reading party in the park at Cedar Grove Park, which was a lot of fun and very successful. We have Civic Saturday, which you've heard about before. We had a partnership with the City of Bothell Arts Council this year to host a documentary film. We go out to schools to promote reading, and we have a few different programs where we engage the students in choosing a book award winner, like a kid's chosen book award winner, and it really facilitates their critical thinking school skills. What makes it a good book? What do they like about it, not like about it, and engage with their peers and librarians. And then Storytime is really hot at Bothell. We have one of the busiest storytimes in all of King County. We sometimes have over 100 people, and it's really fun. And yeah, in the photo here, you see Catherine testing out a design in a STEM program with tweens at the library. Yeah, and even yoga. There's so much going on. So I invite all of you and all the residents in Bothell to come by and check it out. And if you all have any questions, please let
If there, if, I was just going to open it up if there, anybody on council has a question or comment to make to the library. Oh, there, Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to the meeting. The library looks different on the inside, but it's been in the same spot for most of the time I've lived in Bothell, and it's, it always feels kind of like coming home, visiting there, and now I get to share it with my son. There's been a lot of change in that neighborhood over the years, and it's been a very welcoming constant. So thank you for everything you do. And I'm, I even wrote down new programs I hadn't heard of. Like, it's really inspiring to see everything you guys are doing.
Councilmember Zornz?
Real quickly, a walk down memory lane for me. Years ago, you may have been in the old spot, the Dawson Building. You brought in one of my kids' favorite authors, who lives in Great Britain. She came, Helen Oxenbury.
Oh, yeah.
As she came to little old Bothell, and they all brought, they all had their own copies of Pippo. I don't know if you've got Pippo on the shelves, and she autographed it, and it's a keepsake to them this day. So that was quite a gift that the library has been, you know, always touching every generation. What I'm, I'm an avid library user, but I'm thinking I'm going to have to hit the Mango or Rosetta Stone, because I'm getting a Brazilian daughter-in-law, and I speak this much Portuguese, so.
It has Brazilian Portuguese.
Oh.
You have to try. It's.
I have no excuse then.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I also wanted to make kind of a silly plug for Mango. September 19th is Talk Like a Pirate Day, and they do have a module on how to talk like a pirate.
Oh, Councilmember Kurt.
Thanks. Thanks for coming to share a little bit more about the resources that the library offers. I just want to stress to the community that the library is a third place. It's one of those spaces in our city that doesn't require money, and it's like free enrichment. So for the youth in our city who are looking for a place to go, the library is a home, and I just want to thank you for curating that space and making sure that it's really welcoming for all. I, personally, I use the library a lot for printing, and that's a service that, you know, other library systems don't necessarily avail themselves of, and so I'm really grateful for the opportunities that you give to our community through printing, too.
Quick plug for that. If you have a library card, you get $1.50 of free printing per week, so keep that in mind.
Councilmember Aldurks?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm really glad that you're here giving these updates. I was very much looking forward to you being able to come and provide not just like an update of what's going on, but free public education and like guidance on how to best use the library. I'm a huge fan of Libby. I use it all the time, and I can't wait to start using Press Reader. Really excited for that service. I did not know about it before today, so I'm going to check it out. Thank you very much for everything you do in our community. It's, it's not just reading or listening. All of my favorite great courses come from the library, and, and the activities that you also host as well. So thank you, and please keep up the good work and know that you have our enthusiastic support. Thank
Councilmember Manki.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for coming and presenting to us tonight. I like to joke that the tax dollars we spend on the library is the best bang for the buck we're ever going to get with any taxes we pay, and I'm thankful to the libraries in our community. I'm one of those families that every time we come in, we're pulling one of those wagons with us, because we have so many books, we just can't carry them in. And I'm excited for my kids to continue reading and learning and loving it, and continuing that all the way through high school and into college, hopefully in the future. So thank you very much.
Maybe with your help, we'll out-circ Redmond. That's great.
Thank you again for everything you do. It's an amazing resource, and it's a gem in our city. So thank you.
Thank you all.
City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And council, you'll recall that in our budget discussions for 2023 to 2024, one of the requests from the city council at that time was that, as we were considering investments that needed to be made in terms of new vehicle purchases, that as a baseline, we first needed to have an electric vehicle study to understand how are we going to be in the future compliant with new state laws about vehicle procurement and understand what our options are and how do we get ready. What we're bringing back tonight is an update. We, the council did provide funding for a study, and staff has been, went out with an RFP, security consultant, and has been going through that work. Tonight, we are joined by Jeff Sperry, our Fleet and Facilities Manager, who's going to share some highlights of what we learned through that study, and these results, not to steal his thunder, but he'll reiterate it, are going to help inform our budget conversation this fall and into the future around what are the infrastructure needs and the vehicle needs that we have. Jeff is joined tonight by Steve Morikawa, our Deputy Director of Public Works, and with that, I'm going to turn things over to Jeff to lead you through some of the lessons we learned through the study.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Deputy Manager, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers.
I do call myself Deputy Manager sometimes, yes.
I'm here to provide a council update on the progress of the city's fleet electrification plan. This plan tonight is a, or this update does not require any council action. This study does meet one of the goals for the city's council vision of 2040, under the environmental stewardship for the strategic priority, include a strategy to purchase long-term infrastructure that does not contribute to fossil fuel pollution. This study was also, this study will also be included in the climate action plan that is currently under development. Tonight, providing information of the analysis with the findings, as well as our next steps for, that we'll be taking for implementation of this plan. The goal of the study is to provide a plan of implementation for transition to EV. Due to future regulations, this includes the Washington State Zero Emission Vehicles mandate and the Advanced Clean Fleets Rule that is currently being discussed in the state. The study included 140 city vehicles, including light duty, medium duty, and heavy duty, that are based at four main locations, as indicated on the table. The bars represent total number of vehicles and equipment in the city's fleet. The lighter teal bars are the, are the vehicles that are included in the study. The dark blue bars represent all non-motorized or off-road heavy equipment. These items are not included in, in the study. The analysis that, that we received included fleet composition, fleet utilization, and building infrastructure capacities. With this analysis information, we were able to gain fleet rightsizing recommendations, charger allocations, and building infrastructure improvements required to complete transition. The key factor to note for implementation will be the market availability of suitable equipment that aligns with the operational tasks and duties of the equipment that we're trying to replace. The transition timeline to EV is suggested over the next 18 years, as this aligns with our current asset replacement schedule. For the equipment, Phase 1 and Phase 2 are averaging recommended replacements of 10 to 12 vehicles per year. Again, this timeline is contingent on market and budget availability at the time of replacement, and in this, we accounted for with expectation that some vehicles will be replaced with gas or diesel in Phase 1 to then follow up with replacement transition in Phase 3. And so that's why we have the 18 years. Through this study, we put together a cost comparison that evaluated out through 2050 of transition to EV versus no transition. As you can see, the costs are relatively equal when you include the EVSE equipment, which is the electrical, electric vehicle supply equipment infrastructure costs. And for this comparison, it includes the costs and benefits that we included, came to allocations of 2.4 million to install charging infrastructure over the three phases. A total of 68 charging plugs will be needed to transition the vehicles. Charger maintenance costs for each plug. EV procurement, currently right now, EVs are more expensive in the near term. That is estimated or projected to become equivalent and lower as gas engines or, or internal combustion engines will continue to rise. So they'll cross over it in the near future. Currently, there are incentives for EV through 2032, and that was captured in the, in the cost comparison slide with a little, but we didn't forecast anything past 2032 for Fuel cost reductions from a 22 cent for gas to seven cents for electricity per mile, and estimated up to 30% lower vehicle maintenance costs through 2050. There were several findings throughout and recommendations. This plan for infrastructure is currently proposing a plan that multiple EVs share one plug. This would mean vehicles are scheduled for charging every few nights as needed. Each location will also include a supplemental DC fast charger. This will be a stopgap for the, to make up for early or missed or quick charging needs as necessary to provide the coverage and tasks of work. Other findings in the study to plan for include training for fleet EV drivers, technician training for maintenance and repair, as well as EV and EV charger maintenance programs. We will also need to consider backup power for resilient, resiliency of operations. And then finally, next steps. So our next steps, we will develop an implementation plan. This will include phased installation of chargers needed at each site, phased replacement of vehicles according to the asset replacement schedule and EV market availability, infrastructure improvements that are necessary upgrades to support the transition, pursuing grants and other funding to support that effort of transition. Currently, we are submitting for a Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, EECBG, this fall. And then budget strategy, submitting budget proposals for charging infrastructure, as well as vehicle costs beyond the adopted asset replacement funding. And then, thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Jeff. Councilmembers, any questions, comments? Councilmember Kurt?
Hey, thanks for the presentation. This is really exciting, and I'm grateful for all the background information that you've done and your team has done with research. I'm wondering why the decision was made not to include Station 45 in the, in the analysis.
So, that has specialized fire apparatus versus Headquarters 42 has some of the light duty, medium duty trucks that are involved, but the specialized fire apparatus was, was not included in the study.
That makes sense. So, if light duty vehicles are temporarily being used at Station 45, it's anticipated that they would be charged at Station 42?
In the analysis, we did include a charger being installed at 45.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Alderks.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Thank you so much for this update. You really have been busy and put a lot of thought and effort into this, into this presentation and developing this plan, which is exactly what we asked you for. And so, it's great to see it coming back. I do have a couple of questions, and I hope I'm not getting, you know, too into the nitty-gritty. On Slide 6, there are some abbreviations in like the legend in the key. Can you tell me what those abbreviations are, please? The HD, MD, LD?
Oh, that's heavy duty, medium duty, light duty.
Okay. Great. That's easier to read now. Thank you. Heavy, medium, light. All right. And then you mentioned that there may be some grants available. Would that reduce the cost of the program for the city, or is that included in your 30.5 million estimate?
Right now, the estimate does not include any grants, so it would be a direct offset.
Okay. Which, good luck and please pursue as many of those as you can. I know that staff is really great about doing that, and so I look forward to seeing what kind of success you have because that just results in cost savings for the public. So, thank you. And then my last question is, is this, is this implementation plan intended to be in the 2025, 2026 budget that's starting in the next budgetary cycle? I see the City Manager.
No.
Okay.
Yes, we have proposed some budget requests for implementation of, of some chargers.
I love it. That's, that seems very responsive because that budget is coming up. We're, it is upon us. So, thank you very much for, for being prepared for this upcoming budget cycle. Thank you.
The one thing I'll note too, because I always don't want to pass up an opportunity to say thank you, but as you'll recall from the conversations with Finance Director Kwan Wong, part of the refinancing of City Hall, one of the things that informs that is that it makes us grant eligible for charging infrastructure for this building too. And so again, as, as Jeff mentioned, while we don't, we never count on grants, that we don't have the direction that we received from Council last week to move forward. Refinancing of City Hall does open us up to a greater potential. So, that helps fulfill this timeline, and we are appreciative.
Councilmember Menke.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Two quick questions for me. You mentioned that there may be an opportunity to, or not an opportunity, but we may need to purchase new ICE vehicles in the meantime before we can switch. Is there an opportunity perhaps to go hybrid in the meantime before we can actually switch to full electric?
That will be looked at at the time to see if there's market availability to, for greening the fleet or looking at another options. But a lot of it is the medium heavy duty type vehicles or specialized requirements for operating that limit our, well, we can purchase for.
Sure. Makes, makes sense. My other question is around like resiliency specifically. My biggest concern with going full EV, I think it's the right direction to go in, is just around natural disasters. You know, we're all waiting for the big earthquake to arrive and making sure that our vehicles are still operational if we have no power for a week, two weeks. I've visited some disaster areas where hurricanes have come in and it's not been good. And if they didn't have sufficient fuel to power a generator to then power vehicles, that's my biggest concern. I'm sure we're looking at that. I'm sure our emergency management team is looking at that too. But I just want to make sure that's staying top of mind as we look and go forward with this implementation.
Absolutely it is. And that's one item that we are looking at to make sure that we're covering for just those occurrences that could possibly happen.
Great. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I just have a question. Are, when we install chargers in different city buildings or facilities, are they going to be available to the public to use as well? Or is it just city use only?
That is something that will be part of the development of this plan and how we have that open for different uses. Right now, this is just what the city needs for the city fleet to function and move forward. But that is definitely something we can look at as far as in the development plan.
I mean, the DC charger will come in really handy for a lot of people, especially newer residents who have newer, who are new to the EV world. They need to get over the mileage anxiety thing. So, well, thank you so much for the update and looking forward to more updates in the future and the budget conversation we're going to have around this. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the Staff Report section of reports.
Thank you City Manager. Council, we are now in the Council Committee Reports, Community Reports and Conversations. Councilmembers, any updates or things you want to talk about? Councilmember Kurt?
Thanks. I want to provide an update from the first, first Council Conversations that we've had in a while. It took place on Friday at the library, and it was attended by about 35 community members that I counted that, you know, came, came in and went. It was some robust conversations that we had. I think that was attended mainly by people who live nearby, which was something that was an interesting takeaway. We had a wide range of topics that were relevant to, you know, city business. And I think that it was really helpful to engage and be able to answer some questions and get some feedback too. So, I'm encouraged to kind of keep, keep it up if there's still interest. I think that maybe one of the takeaways that I had was we could probably do a little bit more structure. And so, because it was the first time, didn't really know how many people would show up or, you know, how to really balance the number of topics that we could cover. While the two-hour timeframe was, I think it was adequate, maybe ranging the location, ranging the time and day of the week. And then also, maybe having like a comment box or maybe something where, you know, we could collate some of the questions so that there wasn't a lot of repetition or that we could address a lot more in the same amount of time could be helpful. So, those are some of the takeaways. I'm really grateful for the community members who made it out. And I look forward to maybe doing this again in the, in the winter. Yeah.
I had some questions about that. So, I'm really glad you did it. And a shout out to Councilmember Alderks, who, when I had a family thing come up last minute. So, the middle was there. Do you anticipate continuing at the library or perhaps moving around the city as this moves on? And do you want any like assistance with any of that? Is that something you're comfortable just taking on indefinitely? I don't, I don't want you to feel like it's all on you, but I'm perhaps obviously very excited about this continuing.
I think, yeah, voluntold. I, I would be happy to kind of continue to organize some of the logistics. I don't have to be there every single time, but I'm thinking maybe the next time that we could set a, a day would be maybe in like November, early November before holiday season, end of year, busyness is upon people. I'm thinking also because we saw such a kind of a good turnout from people who were very local to the library, it would be interesting to have more rotation throughout the city and just get some feedback where people, where it's convenient for people to, to, to stop by during their day. So, I am interested in finding other areas, especially north part of the city, and whether that's, as we're getting into the winter, I'm very hesitant to have it like outdoors. But that seems like one of the, one of the dearth of third places in our city is that many of them are outside. And so, the library is such a great spot, but I'm, I'm thinking and I'm brainstorming other ideas. If you have any, please share them and, and we can look into it. It's helpful to have a couple of weeks out in order to plan. And just accounting for, you know, we could have a lot of people show up. Don't really put a cap on that. So, I want to make sure that it's a comfortable enough space for everybody.
And Councilmembers, I'll remind you too, as this idea came up or was presented on September 3, the agreement that we had as well as was if there was an interest among the Council of continuing this is that staff could step in and help with some of that coordination and particularly in scheduling of a rotation of Councilmembers to give everyone opportunities to be represented at these, at these conversations, especially since from a planning function, you know, your business takes place here on this dais on Tuesday evening. So, we can do some of that coordination for you. So, if there is an interest, we would be happy to step in and be researching locations, create a proposed schedule, and solicit availability for Councilmembers to participate.
I haven't had this concern in my time on Council, but I, I would plug schools and just other community spaces where everybody is openly welcome. I think in the past, the city has hosted events at places that don't always welcome everyone. And I just want to make sure that we continue to be very open and available to our community. Thank you.
I just want to add that I love the idea of a suggestion box. And maybe just started initially with the Council, the conversations with the community, but that would be great for the community. Just say at a few, future point in time, I'd love a discussion on whatever, or whatever's on their mind. But a suggestion box is a great idea.
I really appreciated that the first, the first event coordinated by Councilmember Kurt went as well as it did. And to your, to your observation that there, it helps to have some structure at these meetings, I'm just recalling a strategy that Representative Duer used when she was on Council, which was to have a set topic. And so, I remember attending one regarding public safety, and there was an officer from Bothell Police Department who was present and able to kind of guide and shape the conversation around a specific topic of conversation. And so, that might be something that we can do and work with, work with members of staff to, to make sure that each area of the, like each department and kind of area of need in the city is given time to allow the public to discuss and be a part of those conversations. So, just one, one thing to consider. And thanks so much for, for leading the way on this.
I will say, I'm really grateful for the support of the Executive Department in, in advertising on the city's website and the calendar. That was really helpful to get the word out. A lot of people heard from kind of community champions in their neighborhood and attended. So, that word of mouth is a really critical way to disseminate information in our city. And so, yeah, as we continue to explore this and, and work on it, I'm encouraged that there's interest in the Council to, to continue. So, it sounds like I'm hearing on the dais that there might be interest in, in continuing, and maybe November would be a good time to set up another one.
Well, we'll get to work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't have any committee updates due to emergency travel plans last week. But I do just want to add to the conversation tonight that today is a special day in the United States of America. It is both Constitution Day and National Voter Registration Day. It goes without saying that voting is important and it's necessary to be registered to vote in order to vote. So, if you aren't registered, please register. And also, it's great to participate in efforts to help other newer voters be able to register as well. But for me, it's really Constitution Day. It's really exciting. I do carry around a pocket constitution with me to city events. So, if ever you want to sign my constitution, I know of at least a couple of elected officials in the state who make a habit of that. And so, I would love it if you could come and sign next to your favorite part of the constitution in my pocket constitution. So, thank you for helping me observe and celebrate that day today. So, thank you.
What does it say on the fourth sentence of Page 300?
It's not that long.
25. By the way, this is an open forum. We're still in the Council Conversations thing, so please jump in.
Okay. Just a brief update. LTAC met today. We talked budget short term and long term. Initially, we decided to, we were thinking of tightening down the budget and doing the holiday lights on the same level that we've done at the past. And then we decided, you know what? We could probably live a little and still stay within our budget. So, we're going, we're looking at expanding up Bothell Way to make walkability through the city well, warm and welcoming, and then also sit with our street sense. We were going to pare that down, but that's become a great tool. And then the other thing that we talked about, well, we had Woodinville Wine Country has been in partnership with the Bothell LTAC and getting heads and beds. But now we've got Red, Redmond in on it, Kirkland in on it, Kenmore in on it, and of course, Woodinville on it. And some of them are building big fancy hotels, and it's creating competition. So, it'll be interesting to see how Bothell stays in the game competitively in bringing tourists in who want to stay in Bothell. And then also, we talked about World Cup Day. And in order to not give any surprises away, the staff has been working and thinking about it, and they're going to bring a presentation to us October 8.
Hopefully, it's World Cup month because it goes for a whole month.
It does, like June through July, something like that?
Can't wait.
You must like soccer.
I love it.
A little bit.
If there's nothing else, we move on to Projected Agenda Discussion. City Manager?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And as noted at the top of the agenda, we'll go from two items to one. But what we do want to still cover tonight is if it's voter registration day, there must be an election coming up. So, on November 5, we have a confluence of events of our regularly scheduled council meeting as well as a national election. Wanted to pose the question to Council of direction on how we want to handle that first week of November. In your packet tonight is three options to consider. You can come up with, you can choose your own adventure. But the, the most notable that we had was to move the meeting to Monday, November 4. Now, we could possibly continue to meet on November 5, but propose starting early and then trying to end by 7:30. You could start at 6 and tell us to end it early. Like, so there's some variation there. We could just continue as scheduled. I'll note that like two of the favored things that we normally do when we have conflicts with events is, number one is moving things to a fourth Tuesday with Thanksgiving holiday following, following on the fourth week of the month. We generally stay away from that. Your facial reactions tell me that's smart. The other one is, is potentially considering a cancellation, which of course is an option. We just know the consequence of that with both a biennial budget, running our agendas here between now and the end of the year, as well as comprehensive plan work that likely, the likelihood of us staying awake on the other nights is diminished if we don't have some capacity in November. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you. I don't need a vote, but would, would love to see if we can get to a consensus decision, and we will then adjust accordingly.
Councilmembers.
One question. I'm just going to call them Plans Option A, B, and C. If we were to do, meet from 5 to 7:30, would we still be able to get the work done to kind of keep the machinery running? It's a half hour difference, right?
Right. Yeah. So, I mean, that's part of the, the thought of moving it to a 5 o'clock start. You know, we, when we did this also two years ago, one of the things that we focused on was just having budget conversations and really having it as a study session, which helped. We can do something like, as we look at the content and as we have our conversations in October about budget and the questions Council has, that'll help us gauge how much us gauge how much, what, what fits the box, right? And so that, that we'll figure out how to accommodate. But I believe so. And that is why we want to keep the option open of starting a little earlier than that, too.
Okay. So my favorite one is Plan B. The middle one. Thanks.
Yeah. Council member Manki.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I agree. I, I would prefer Plan B, moving to five to 7:30. I believe I'll have a conflict on Monday night, but I need to double check that.
Council member Alderks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I too would prefer, um, the shortened, earlier and shortened, um, meeting on November 5th until 7:30. Thank you.
Council member Kurt.
I'll make it four.
I have no preference.
Same.
I think we have clear direction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. And now to our consent agenda. Um, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Oh, council member.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Uh, we have a motion from, uh, council member Dodd and a second from council member Kurt to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? City clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Council member Zornz?
Yes.
Council member Alderks?
Yes.
Council member Kurt?
Yes.
Council member Manki?
Yes.
Council member Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Pass a six zero with Mayor Thompson absent an excuse.
Thank you. And now we'll, we have a, we'll move on down there for the final item on our agenda, which is a study session. And we will take a 15 minute break. Uh, we'll be back at, uh, seven forty-seven. All right. Seven fifty.
Recording stopped.
I said it before, he said.
You got it. Seven fifty is official.
All right. Welcome back. We are in the study session section and I'll hand it off to the city manager to do this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And you can almost relax in the study sessions, but I just want to remind you that you get to adjourn us. So don't think you're done with action yet.
Can I do that now?
I mean, you can. It's in your prerogative, but you got to use that power wisely. Uh, council, we have one study session topic tonight, but it is a, a significant one. You can see there's not only an agenda bill, but six attachments. And that's when you know things are weighty. But, um, we are in fact in the, really in the, the final stretches of comprehensive plan conversations as we head into the end of the year. Our community development, uh, deputy director Christian Kets went over a, um, summary of what's to come on the comprehensive plan. And I just wanted to note, um, there was a comment earlier tonight about what's in the 2024 comprehensive plan. So just for clarity, uh, making sure everybody is, uh, is aware, what's been published so far was a draft. And there was a draft, public comment draft that, um, went out in the spring. And now what we're bringing back is section by section is going to be what's proposed as the final for consideration and council will be able to, um, look at that and see if there's any changes that need to be made. There, um, as Christian covered last week, we have tonight's study session will be back on October 1st and the 8th and the 15th for different elements of it. But then what I really wanted to note too is that on November, November 19th, about a month after a real concentrated conversation about the comprehensive plan, there will be a public hearing for the council to hear feedback from the community on the final comprehensive plan draft and development regulations. And so if there are questions about it, that it would be a great time to be able to come in on record and give the council some feedback to consider. Um, all that to be said is until the comprehensive plan is adopted, it is not in effect. And I think, uh, I think council is aware of that. But I just wanted to reiterate that for, for anybody who's following along and trying to reconcile between the comprehensive plan draft that's been posted and, um, what's before us now. So with all that being said, we are now tonight going to be focusing on the transportation, um, project list, uh, the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. You'll remember as we started on this journey, this was the, really one of the first topics we talked about with comprehensive plan. It's one that needed a little more time and sequencing. And so it's only appropriate that as we come back in this, uh, home stretch that we begin there as well. With that, I'm going to introduce Deputy Public Works Director Steve Morikawa to lead the presentation, introduce the team and guide us through the session tonight. Steve, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. So good evening, deputy manager and council members. Tonight we'll be presenting the comp plan, the transportation element, project and program list. So I have Kendra Brilin, who is from Fear and Pierce. She's a principal there and she stepped in for Carmen. And Carmen's going to be back in a few weeks, which is cool, but she's done heavy lift. And Riaid Tierney, who's our transportation supervisor. So putting together and reviewing a 20-year project program list is a difficult thing. It feels kind of really detailed because it identifies specific projects. However, we must remember that it's a 20-year period. It's almost impossible to predict what's going to happen. So keep that in mind. It's kind of a living document, but we're going to have to amend it and adjust it within those 20 years. So this is kind of like our best snapshot, um, plan, given what we know today. A year from now, it might change a little bit and we have to adjust to that. So as we go through this, certainly get to understand the projects and programs, but don't forget to kind of take a step back and look at it from your 20, 20-year level and 20-year eyes. In our discussions tonight, I'm going to be using some specific projects as an example, but I'm really not trying to ask you whether it's this project or this project. I'm kind of using it as an example to get an idea from you guys and how you feel about how we approached it. And then from there, we can kind of take it forward and work our way through that and put the list and finalize it. So in terms of the overall comp plan, Christian, um, the other week gave you a very comprehensive where we are. This is just a snapshot. We're still barely in the third quarter. Um, we've identified the preferred alternative for you. Staff is working to put that plan together and finishing that up, including working on the final EIS. Uh, we're continuing to meet with the planning commission as well as the council, and we're going to have a public hearing coming up. And again, the goal is still to finish this up by the end of the year. Oops. Sorry. Try again. Let's escape. Go there. Okay. Oops. Now I did it. Sorry. Let's try this again. There we go. Sorry about that. Again, so for the overall comprehensive plan, while we still have the draft plan on the website, the major public engagement opportunities are kind of behind us. We're going to have the public hearing. We have the study sessions. So there really isn't much more feedback we're going to get. But from the transportation element, I'll talk a little bit later about one last piece of, um, public outreach that we're going to kind of do, or engagement probably, less than the outreach part. I'm going to press this side. It's not working. Yeah. It's not moving for me. That one might work. No. Let me try to get out again. Sorry. There we go. Yep. See if that works. Oh, did you press something?
No, I didn't.
Okay. I did.
I don't know what's happening.
I was going to hand it to you. You might have the magic fingers. Okay. So we're here to present, uh, again, the 20-year, um, transportation project program list. Talk about the anticipated revenue, which is very important. It's all tied together, but no action is required, but we're kind of counting on getting your input and I'll be asking you some questions to help feed that. Okay. So specifically for the transportation element, we've completed our analysis. We've run our traffic modeling and everything based on the land use, including a preferred alternative. Um, we've used the prioritization criteria you and the planning commission came up with and we kind of agreed upon to develop the list. And it is constrained by the available funding. So we're trying to finish up the transportation element section, including our contribution to the final EIS. And we're going to work through the study sessions and the public hearings along with the rest of the team to get us to the final end line. So tonight, essentially what I want to do is basically recap, just to remind you, it's been several months since we came here because it's taken so long to put the list together. How we, the process we're going to go through, if you remember, I indicated the process was very, very important, not just the prioritization criteria itself. I'll give you a summary of the, um, results and then we'll kind of go through the draft project list and then talk about some next steps. So let's start with the project list development prioritization process. And again, um, the process is important. So we worked with the planning commission and the council on adopting a bike plan a couple of years ago. And we also came back last year, I think mid-year and talked about missing sidewalk gaps and came up with our prioritization process for that. So those lists are kind of feed the MODO plan projects. And those two lists are though they're prioritized, we will use them as part of our comp plan as well. And we've used them and I'll talk about how to create this list further. We also strongly suggested that we complete projects that we've started, especially those with grants. Um, and also suggested continuing to fund annual programs such as pavement preservation, sidewalk, bridge maintenance, bike and safety. And remember safety in our CFP, we said we had like four, five different small ones. We're trying to pull it together into one to make it a little bit more flexible, including for, I think, grants when we get grants. If we have a bigger pot of money, we could probably do more and then we can be, uh, move along. We did start with vehicle capacity projects as identified in the 2015 comp plan and the Canyon Park suburb plan and the downtown suburb area plan. That's our starting point. And we kept those to make sure we had a basic functioning, functioning network, a certain level of service for vehicles at least. We actually were able to get rid of a couple of smaller projects. And that's actually phenomenal. I don't know how much you guys realize, but typically every year you're putting more projects in capacity wise. This year we actually got rid of a couple of small capacity projects, which I think is our goal eventually is to not have to do capacity projects. So that I think is a huge thing. We identified new projects. Uh, we did a whole safety analysis and we came up with projects associated with that. Riaid did, uh, resiliency, uh, study and analysis and we came up with projects like that for that. If there were not already included, like ped bike, safety and resiliency in our vehicle capacity projects, we stuffed them in there. So if the project limit was from here to here, and for some reason we didn't have a sidewalk there and it needed one, that project is now a sidewalk project, um, as well as a capacity project. And then what we did was also, um, combine the ped bike and resiliency projects, even if there was no capacity projects, to try to make bigger projects if it made sense and would compete for grants better. And if you're already there doing a sidewalk, you should do the bike. And if you're in front of there and manage to access, makes sense, you would do something like that as well. So we tried to get and combine these projects as well. And those are the ones that really we started applying the criteria to, to make sure we understood what was a higher priority than So this is the criteria that we all came up with, um, and we used. And just as a reminder, ITS means intelligent transportation systems and TSMO, we call it TSMO, is transportation system management and operations. And that includes things like transportation demand management, the kind of thing we're doing in Canyon Park to try to reduce number of single occupancy vehicle trips, which is part of the reason why you don't have to add capacity projects, which is kind of a cool thing. Um, and then, yep. So then once we had a draft project list, we had to figure out the revenue available over a 20-year period. And then it was kind of an iterative process because you have this much funding with grant opportunities. You have this much projects and it doesn't line up. So you add a project or subtract a project, you can get a grant. So you add it on this side. So it was kind of a little bit of an iterative process. But the end of the game is essentially in a 20-year period, you balance the revenue you have with the amount of projects that you're going to do. So quickly as an executive summary, and this was in the agenda bill, some of the higher elevation things that we should be thinking about is it works with the preferred alternative, which is what we need to do for the comprehensive plan. It really does reflect the positive outlook. Um, City of Bothell has been fairly successful with getting transportation grants, um, in the last 10 or 15 years. And this outlook assumes that we are going to continue to be successful to get these grants. So it is a positive outlook. Um, we will need to do sufficient planning and have strategies to do this because to sustain this over a period of time takes a lot of work in planning which grants you can go after and when, because you need a grant for design, a grant for right of way, and then a grant for construction for three different projects. And you're going after potentially the same grant. So how do you cycle this so that every target kind of hits itself and you can maximize your opportunities over a 20-year period? So it's going to take a little bit of time and effort and resources, including probably staff to succeed with that. It is safety, pedestrian, bike and transit oriented as we go through the list. And I think as you saw, we put a kind of a checkbox next to them to see which things they addressed, did it address capacity sidewalks and, um, bikes. And you see that most of the projects checked multiple boxes, which is a good thing. Um, let's see. It is larger in scope and cost than the 2015 comprehensive plan. So it's close to about $850 million in 20 years. And in 2015, that number was $470 million. Seems like twice, but it's not quite because if you, 10 years ago, probably 30 to 50% cheaper. So you got to escalate up. And then all our projects in 20 years aren't going to happen in the beginning of 20 years. So you have to escalate it up again. So although it's a huge looking gap, it's not as big as you think it is, but it is, it is more work than the 2015 comp plan had. Just to kind of give you an idea, um, and to make sure that this all lines up, I think Gretchen and the finance department was talking at last council meeting about, um, financing. And in the capital facility plan, she mentioned a number, but she didn't, she included only secured funding. She didn't include grants that we have to get. So in a plant, 20-year plan, if you don't include the grants, you're not going to get much done. So we, our plan is financially constrained, but it makes an assumption that we're going to get grant fundings, which is typically unsecured. But in that CFP that you guys have been looking at, we're planning on spending about $250 million in the next seven years. So a 20-year plan is about three times that length. So it's about right. 250 times three is about 750 million. We're about 850 million. So we have a very aggressive CFP, but we have to continue that for three more, two more cycles. So it is a positive outlook and it's a fairly aggressive outlook. The projects are fairly large. Um, this is a little different. Intersection projects tend to be on the order of a few million dollars. Corridor projects, because of their length and the fact that we real build in frontage, tend to be very expensive. So we're doing mostly corridor projects. We're trying to connect long things. East Riverside Trail is long. 228th, if we put sidewalks and bike lanes, is long. So the projects are fairly large and they're expensive. Um, and then the input we're going to be looking for you is this particular draft that we provided to you, we're asking you if you would like and want to be a little flexible in some of the projects. And the reason for that is the cost of the projects. Uh, once we got down to some of the costs, we could see how much it costs. And we want to make sure that our approach is correct. And again, I'm not trying to compare projects to projects, but as an example, on 228th Street, which I'll talk about, that's a hundred million dollar project from city limit to city limit. And the proposal, if you read it, would be to fill in where there's no bike lane and sidewalk today present together. So 50% of 228th has a sidewalk and a on-street bike lane. So if we do the other 50% and do it to our vision of protected bike lane and sidewalk, we'd have a complete sidewalk along the whole, both sides. We'd have complete bike facility, but 50% of it would be protected. 50% would still be on the street. That would be a hundred million dollars. If we wanted to do everything, that would be 200 million dollars. And that extra hundred million dollars has to come from somewhere. So what we did was just put together a plan that says if we did it this way, this is what we could do. And that's probably, that's one of the questions we're going to talk to you about. The other way is in our adopted bike plan, we had protected bike facilities for every, that's the minimum, other than a few greenways. And we did have some shared use paths. So in our bike plan, we do the best we can, snapshot in time, and we identified protected bike facilities in a lot of locations. And looking at some of them, it might make more sense to put a shared use trail because of just the terrain, and I'll talk about why. That also saves quite a bit of funding and all. That also saves quite a bit of funding and allows you to do work elsewhere as well. Pluses and minuses, protected bike lane separates the bikes and the PEDs. Protected shared use path, you're still protected, but the PEDs and the bikes are together. So that's a downside. One of the questions philosophically is, is that okay to look like that for some facilities where it seems to make sense in order to get more facilities? So again, that's kind of the general discussion we will have. Not sure why I put a map there, but this is a map, all the projects, and you will see more maps later relative to some of the things that we're trying to, um, compare it with and make sure we address. So what I wanted to start with was the actual revenue to kind of give you a sense of the target we're looking at and how it kind of comes together. So many of the funds don't overlap the city's general fund. REIT 2 is the one that actually does. You don't have to use it on transportation projects. You can use it on parks, projects and other things. Recology fees are waste, um, are garbage and recycling. They come in, they have a contract, a certain amount of the fees from that contract get directed to pavement preservation because they have heavy trucks and they're beating up the roadways and things. Saw cut fees are similar. Somebody comes in, cuts the road for whatever reason, utility, it can be PSC or whatever, they pay a saw cut fee and that again helps us to maintain our street. Develop frontage in lieu of fees is kind of a one-time, um, source of funds. We did some work in the downtown and the developers are paying us for their work after the fact as part of our contract. It's not an ongoing thing we're gonna see forever, but there's a starting balance there that we can work with. And the same thing with safe streets and sidewalk levy. We haven't quite spent everything yet. Uh, we have until the end of 2025 to collect fees. We will use of that money in 25, 26 to finish up some sidewalk projects and some, um, paving projects. So for transportation, probably the bigger sources of funding are transportation impact fees. And we also have administrative fee on top of that. And that's when a developer comes in and they create trips. Um, we charge for the trips. This number here is an estimate based on the land use we're gonna get and the growth we anticipate with about the same fee. Okay? Probably escalated up a little bit, but again, it ties directly to the land use we have. Uh, so if, for example, we're gonna get less land use, you'd see less funding out of that. Federal and state grants make up a lot of our, uh, funding for transportation projects. You can see here it's 30, 40, little over 50%. And that's about right. A lot of our bigger corridor projects are heavily grant funded. Uh, and that's where you see we have to be successful in bringing in grants. Other agencies, things like, um, Sound Transit, we've worked with them, we've got some access money, which I'll show you later. It's not a huge amount of money, but once in a while, we can get either partner with them on something or they have programs where you can apply for kind of like grant funding and get it. Private development is always interesting. Um, so a share of what we do, and this is the question I think asked before by, can't remember if it was a Planning Commission person, but why do we have hopscotch development? You'll see a roadway and then you'll see a sidewalk on two properties and the rest of it doesn't have anything. It looks really funky and why do we do that? Well, over a period of 20 years, that fills in quite a bit. And instead of the city having to pay 90% of their roadway, more of it's paid by the front, um, the developer. So that's actually participating in our infrastructure. There are some roads that you have to predict is not gonna provide a lot of the private development, like portions of 228th are very residential and unlikely to redevelop. So probably we would have to do that one. There are certain streets, Beardsley and 185th, that are likely to redevelop really quickly. So it's likely that private development would pay for most of that. So again, that's just an estimate, our best guess on how that participation is gonna occur. The last one is the new revenue sources. And again, our safe street and sidewalk levy sunsets at the end of 2025. And the plan assumes that there will be new revenue of some sort. Uh, we put it at 15% and that could be anything from a new levy to business license fee increases, sales use tax, vehicle license fee. We don't know, that's a discussion for the future that would be brought back, but in the plan, we're putting that there will be something there. Some of that revenue is to provide for, um, the pavement preservation. I'll go through that. And then a lot of it is to help us pay for bike and PED on the corridor projects as I think I'm gonna stop right there before we actually get into the project list, if there's any clarifying question at this point. Now I'm throwing a lot at you in a short period.
So, on the slide, that was the prioritization criteria. Um, if you could go back to that. I wanted to, I wanted to ask, um, this, okay, you're almost there. There you go. Um, this looks remarkably similar to one of the comp plan open house exercises.
Okay.
Was that informed, like, was this informed by the, like, feedback from the community and what the community said was priorities for them and what, how they wanted things to be weighted?
I think it was like a three-legged stool. We talked to the Planning Commission, we talked to the Council, and we showed it to the public and got input.
Okay.
So I believe that's how we got that, yes.
Yeah, it, it looks familiar. And so I was glad to see that.
Actually, the last line, accessibility was a request from the council members, if you guys remember. We added those, those on discussions.
Yeah, thank you. All right. And then to the revenues, um, I guess the, the revenue slide. Um, you mentioned other agencies and can that also include, like, if we partner with counties and receiving funding from counties?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Uh, and then last question around relying on new revenue sources. You described some of what they could be, um, and, and some of them are things that have come up in conversation before. Um, but like, I guess my, my question is, what is the process or timeline to add new revenue sources and would there be a delay that might impact the, you know, I guess it would still be able to average across the years, but might it take time to get a new revenue source factored in?
I think it would affect the different things differently. So there are some annual things, as, as I said, like sidewalk gaps and pavement preservation that we rely on that right now. And maintenance is a tough thing because if you guys, you know, whoever owns a house, if you don't maintain it, it's gonna cost you more in the future. So if you don't maintain your roof, it's gonna rot below and then all of a sudden you're not just replacing the, the tar paper and the roofing, you're replacing the plywood and everything. So similar to maintenance, I think those are the things that might creep on, creep on us and it would, we would have to compensate it for later or it would cost more later. And then some of the bigger projects, um, are gonna rely on some of those sources. So yeah, if we don't, if we push it off too far, that would delay us in our grant cycles. And instead of having 20 years of grant cycles and we don't have the match, we might have 18 or 17. So I think so. Um, it's just the magnitude of not doing anything. Again, it could be that, this is all planning. Um, there are other sources of funding that we could get. We could be very successful in grants upfront. Um, the, there could be a lot of development upfront. So again, this is all predicting over a 20-year period of what could happen. So.
But I am hearing a recommendation and a need for new revenue sources in order to pull this plan off.
I think if, I think two things. For maintenance, definitely affects from year one. And I think in terms of vision, um, it helps to do it sooner than later just because the cost of things start building as well.
Thanks for, thanks for those reflections. Appreciate it.
Quick question. Um, I think it's premature to ask you about some specific projects, though you said there's flex, there's flexibility over time on those projects. So I'm gonna try to stick with what you presented. Um, uh, in, in the agenda packet, it was mentioned who was input from public, Planning Commission, Council and other stakeholders. Who were the other stakeholders?
So we actually reached out to transit agencies and we had a working group with WashDOT. And we also tried to reach out to the North Shore Scoot District. And so we tried to get input from them in terms of transportation.
Yeah, thank you. I'm hearing that, um, you know, 53% of the plan revenues come from grants. It's really important to make those successful. I'm wondering, um, in your experience and the types of grants that you typically pursue at the city, what makes a successful grant, um, project? Is it multi-benefit? Is it, um, does it key into certain equity aspects? How can we strategize about, um, these different projects and make sure that we're pursuing grants that, um, kind of match with the, um, you know, the best fit?
So the answer is yes, it's all those things. I think it starts with a good plan, cause if you can tell a story, um, it helps a lot. How does this fit into your transportation system and why is it gonna benefit? I think the benefiting multiple modes is very important. To date, even this last, um, grant cycle in the spring, um, capacity is a big, it's a big, um, point getter for the federal grants that we rely on mostly. There's some talk about that changing. And so that's a good and a bad. We have a couple more projects that would compete very well for capacity plus multimodal. Um, so we, we know we would get those grants. If they change it suddenly and say, no capacity projects, we're just gonna do PED and bike and non-motorized, those projects are gonna have a hard time funding because how are you gonna build that extra lane for the bus without? So, um, I think the city also has, um, historically paid a lot of attention to it and tried to put a lot of staff time into it. What we're finding out now is we also have to spend the money. And unfortunately, every two years is a grant and then there's, every year there's other grants and that's where the resources and the time comes in. It's all built in though. It's 850,000, million dollars includes all those costs. So that's cost to get grants and staff it and all that kind of stuff. But we just have to be, like you said, cognizant of what out there and be able to, I think we have to take the time to stay up to date with them and that in itself takes time.
Yeah, that makes sense. I know previously when we were talking about sidewalk funding, um, I think I heard that our city doesn't, hasn't historically competed very well with sidewalk grants. I'm just wondering how, you know, if we're extrapolating out that, you know, 53% of our funding is coming from grants, how are we changing our strategy? How are we making sure? It sounds like we're looping those projects in, we're combining things, we're making more attractive looking projects in order to compete better. Is that kind of along the lines?
And I think, like I said, I believe the grant agencies are morphing a little bit. So we went with Ninth Avenue, which I thought was kind of if you're getting grants and we actually got it. We weren't the highest scoring, but we convinced them enough that it was gonna support our growth, um, growth center. So we were able to score. I think something like 228th will be a challenge because there's no capacity whatsoever in it. But it's a safety project. So we can, we can sell a sidewalk project as a safety project, a bike project as a safety project. And there are, there are more and more safety funds coming out because that's becoming the, the bigger priority, more than capacity now. So again, we will have to shift how we look at things and how we sell these projects and that's what we're trying to do.
Excellent. Thanks. That's good narrative building, that, um, exercises for city staff. And, um, if there are areas or grant, um, opportunities that you find, um, quite constraining, um, that would help with maybe a little bit of legislative push, please continue to let us know because, um, we have been, you know, going to regional meetings and having discussions about, you know, grant programs. And so having experience and the knowledge that, um, you know, city staff have in applying for those grant funding, if we're gonna be relying on them, it's in our best interest to make our, our voice heard. So, thank you.
One of the biggest contributions Council can make in that state too is always keeping that in mind as we're talking about legislative agendas, is that those legislative agendas become the, the, not only a document that guides our strategy and the conversations of what we're doing and our direction to our lobbyists, but it's also as we go and we talk to lawmakers, we can really highlight the types of things we're looking to do, which gives support. So just wanna, if you ever feel like, are you contributing enough, those, um, those plans in that direction is gold.
And I think the one area that we, Council, everybody in the city has been pushing equity and trying to get us there. And that's one of the hottest and biggest rising scoring things in grants now. So I think that helped tremendously. The other thing is we've been trying to focus on safety and we're trying to get that up to speed. We've been a little bit behind because of COVID and everything. So we're trying to get that up to speed, but we've got the plan put together. That also helps because they're increasing the safety points as well. So, yeah. Any other questions before?
I was gonna ask, this is a little specific, but you had mentioned 228th. And when you say there's no capacity, it's not to increase capacity? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. We're not widening 228th from where it's two lanes or three lanes, it'll stay three lanes. Where it's five lanes, it'll stay five lanes. What we would do is really work on the, the bike facility, the PED facility, and maybe some safety issues like, we call it managed access. You don't let people take left turns in and out and people hate that, they're gonna make U-turns, but it's safer, things like that.
Yeah, no, and I, um, I thought about it just because since in the north part of the city, we don't really border other cities. We border unincorporated San Homish County. And as an example, and I'm just wondering how this plays out in a grant, um, there's a proposed residential development, um, just outside city limits, across from the Kenmore Gun Range. And that is adding a lot more units right there. So it's somewhat likely that unless folks are heading to Locust, they're gonna go down to 228th to Balthazar Highway. And I'm wondering if that's something that, like, we don't necessarily see a lot of Baltho development inside city limits there, but there is some stuff happening right outside. Is that part of the grant process?
It's not really part of the grant process, it's part of our planning process.
Okay.
So when they did the model, I specifically said, well, do your model support that number of units? And they came back and said, yes.
Okay.
So, so our capacity of 228th accommodates that large redevelopment that's occurring.
And that makes sense because it's in our MOOC, right? So it's like, we have to plan for that.
Yeah, we, I mean, we get traffic from everywhere coming through.
Yeah.
Especially on our major primary arterials. We can't stop that. So basically, the motto is a regional motto and we fine-tune it in Baltho, but it feeds in what it anticipates is gonna come from other directions. So we take care of that as well.
Okay, thanks. I just, that kind of made me think about that, so I was curious.
Just wanted to ask about the flexibility portion and just ask for, and before that, ask for clarification, the 850 million is with or without the flexibility?
Right now, it's with. And when we go through the project list, again, I, I try not to say, let's do this or that project, but I will use projects and tell you which ones that we propose doing something a little different. And then I would like to get input whether that's good or no, or we wanna go a different direction. And if we do go a different direction, I'll tell you what that direction would look like and what we would have to do.
So did you, when you were doing your, your analysis, then you looked at, here's what, when everything is done, it's gonna be $2 billion and then if there's flexibility, it's gonna be 850 million, like, I assume you did that max?
So that iterative process.
Okay.
So looked at it and said, this is how much we're pretty much gonna wind up with, even if we're very positive or positive on grants. Don't wanna be too optimistic either. And, um, if I just put the normal cost, if I just said, oh, everything's per plan that we talked about in the bike plan, this is what it's gonna look like. I saw what it was gonna look like and a number of projects goes down. So I looked at, we looked at each one really closely and said, okay, is there something that practically makes sense? You know? Cause this is, this is Baltho's money. Baltho were to spend it, would Baltho think that makes sense? This is kind of what we're proposing would, we think would make practical sense, but that's the decision the Council needs to look at and say, yeah, that looks about right. And there's, there's, it's not gonna affect the whole thing, but, um, there's a, as I go through the, the projects, I think it'll become clearer what I'm asking you specifically, very specifically.
Uh, I understand the project because, you know, the way you, you say, here's the list of requirements, which is all the list of projects we wanna fill. And then you say, here must, how much is it gonna cost, like you showed in that other slide.
Yeah.
And then it's, here's how much money we can realistically raise and that's how you reach the 850 million.
Right.
Dollars, uh, 850 million. But my question is, what is the total actual cost and how much actual revenue we need to raise if we wanna do every single thing in the plan?
And I, I can help you with that. And I, I can help you with that.
You have, so I can start adding cost if we want to do that. Oh, okay. So you, so, yeah, you didn't say, here's the max, and then you came down to the?
It, it's a little bit of a give and take because of the type of projects. But as an example, and I'm using two twenty-eighth, because that's the most dramatic example. It's a very long corridor. So like I said, we specifically looked at it, and fifty percent of it has a sidewalk with a bike lane. Okay, so not ideal. We want a protected bike lane, okay? But let's say over a twenty-year period, we invest a hundred and twelve million dollars, whatever it is, and we finish the other fifty percent, so that, and it's not, it's not one side and the other side. It's kind of scattered a little bit, okay? But what you would wind up with is a hundred percent sidewalks along the whole corridor, and you'd wind up with fifty percent protected bike lanes, psychotrac directional. So in portions, you might be going eastbound on two twenty-eighth, and you're in a protected facility, and then you might have to hop on the road and then hop off again. So not idea, not your end vision, definitely. But that saves half the cost, which is a hundred twelve million dollars. So what can you spend, you know, would you rather see that? And we can show you what, where we are in our total cost estimate and what that does for the distribution of projects throughout the city.
Cool.
So would you rather see, you know, a complete another corridor of a bike and ped facility versus finishing that one first completely, and there's nothing on the other corridor? So those kind of comparisons.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So let me?
Jump into it.
Okay, so let me move forward. Okay, so where we started was capacity projects. And although they are capacity projects, again, what we tried to do is show you that they're not just taking care of cars. They're taking care of safety, ped, bike transit, resiliency in one case, and freight. Again, they're expensive. You can see there, hundred seventeen million, fifty-four million, forty-eight million. So those are all corridors or new roadways, and they're pricey and they're fairly long. So the two that I want to point out here, where I'm talking about flexibility, are Twentieth Avenue, Southeast Extension, and two fourteenth. So both of those are in Canyon Park. Twentieth would be essentially if you're driving to the, the Baltho, Baltho Operations Center, and you go up north on that road, that's Twentieth. Taking that road, and this is out of the Canyon Park subarea plan, and connecting it to five twenty-four. What that does is Canyon Park really is limited in amount of access points to the business park, and that's what's causing the congestion on five twenty-seven. So we're trying to create more access points. So that would be one. It's not ideal, because it goes through a wetland. It's also a brand-new road. So for this one, the fifty-four million dollars that you see there is actually less than what our bike plan would call for, which would be psychotracks on each side protected and a sidewalk behind that on each side. What I'm proposing there is a shared use path on one side, protected, so behind a five-foot bike and then a sidewalk on the other side. And you're like, why would that save so much money? The, the footprint is narrower. On the existing roadway, there's sidewalks on both sides of the roadway right now. So let's say that's about a third or a quarter of the length. I don't have to rebuild one side. I just have to rebuild one side with the shared use path. That saves us, I think it's on there, and I would have to look at it, but it saves us twenty-nine million dollars, okay? So the question to the council would be, are you open to that type of flexibility where the terrain, the environmental impact, the cost could be reduced if we went to a shared, protected shared use path on one side of the roadway, that's twelve feet wide, versus our standard in the bike plan that says, you know, five to six and a half foot psychotrac with a sidewalk behind that? The downside is shared use path, you got bikes and ped conflicts versus the shared use, the psychotracks, you don't. It's very designated bike and designated pedestrian. So there are trade-offs on that. Two fourteenth is similar. So two fourteenth is kind of the northernmost exit point on, for Canyon Park Business Park, and it enters onto five twenty-seven, and it kind of goes a little bit to the west, but it kind of dies out before it hits Ninth. So again, the, the subarea plan said, put it through. And that would allow another west access point to the business park and just relieve traffic a little bit. Again, same cross-section, it would have a protected bike lane both sides. This one has, this one, I think, is about three quarters of the road is already there with a sidewalk on the south side and the wetlands on the north side. The proposal would be to put the shared use path on the north side, don't touch the south side, keep it a two-lane road. And then where you build the, the remaining new quarter, you kind of match that as well. And again, it saves money, because you're not working on both sides of the road. You're reducing the footprint a little bit. And again, the downside is a shared use path, which is protected, but you're not separating pets and bikes necessarily. So that's one type of flexibility. I think it's at least these two locations. There might be a third I'd have to bring up.
I think it makes sense. I, I can't say that continuity is worth like thirty million dollars. Like, that's, you know, we, we, we're asking a lot in our transportation plan and in our bike plan and everything, and the closer we can get to it, the better. I also think the, the potential conflict on a shared use path is not, I'm not super concerned about it. I think about times that I bike on a shared use path, I'm going slower. I'm not expecting pedestrians to keep up in like a little speed racer moment, right? Like, if I want to go that fast, I'll be on the road. And I think it's a good balance of just the, the need versus the funding that we're realistically going to expect. So I appreciate the creativity. And to me, the, the biggest part is that protection for pedestrians and cyclists and, and anybody else who's on the shared use path. Because it's, that's the part that keeps me off of some roads right now as a cyclist, is there's just no protection. So that, that's the priority, and it seems like that's preserved in that plan. So I, I like it.
A quick question. When you were talking about kind of a patch connection on two twenty-eighth, so a hundred percent would be, would be covered, but you'd have places where it was protected and some places where it wasn't.
For the bike, yes.
For bike. And I, and, and in my mind, I'm envisioning a cyclist in the, in the cycling lane popping up onto the sidewalk and then popping back down when they get the, I mean, if I were biking, that's what I would be doing before going out into the bike lane. When we talk about the shared path, you're not talking about a, necessarily a ground path. You're just talking about like maybe an asphalt-paved path that's dedicated to only cyclists and scooters?
No.
You're going to allow ped, pets on there?
Yeah, so, yeah, a psychotrac, typically you'd have a curb and gutter, a five-foot planter, then a psychotrac that's delineated from the sidewalk. So bikes would be only on that five-foot or six and a half foot wide psychotrac.
But this is for bikes going both directions?
So shared use path is only on one side of the roadway. On one side of the roadway, I'd just have a five-foot planter and a five-foot sidewalk. On the other side, I'd have a five-foot planter and a twelve-foot shared use path out of asphalt. And bikes and pedestrians can, it would look like the Burke-Gilman Trail.
That's what I was, that's the image that just popped into my head.
And that's one of the things I had to look at, too, because, you know, we all love that. You know, we aspire to a certain vision. So shared use path, there is a downside to it. But also, when I'm thinking about it, I'm looking at it and going, Puget Sound region, one of our primary highways is a shared use path. It's not ideal, but it's, it's still a wonderful facility. So, you know, you got to balance those things and what we can do.
And the one thing about the Burke-Gilman Trail is there's speed limit signs for cyclists. So how are we going to monitor speed of cyclists if there's pedestrians in that area?
So I think I talked about this, I can't remember with who, but it also is a culture thing. If you go to different countries, like I went to Japan recently, and they use their shared use paths differently, and they're going at different speeds. And, you know, the United States cycling is different. It's just the culture of how we do things here. So we have to account for that as well. So again, there's, there's no ideal solution. I'm giving you options. And what I'd like to do is kind of talk it through here. Don't have to make a decision on these, this here. But after you hear going through the whole thing and you look at the whole suite of projects, I think that's where I want you all to weigh in, because then you have the biggest picture possible. Right now, you're still limited to two projects, and you're just looking at this piece. What I'm telling you is a little bit of flexibility would buy you more projects, if that's what's more important to you. And we can see what those would be. But again, there's a trade-off. So there's, there's no right way here. It's just how we, what, what city values we think rise to the top. Should we finish everything completely in one or, in a few locations? Should we try to get more in, you know? I don't know if there's an easy answer. So it's, that's the questions I want you guys to talk about.
Do you want us to, to ask questions now? Do you want us to wait till you show us the big picture?
But I'm, I'm trying to make sure that you don't feel like you have to make decisions now, because I think the more you see, the higher you look at a bigger picture. I think that will help you a little bit.
Thank you. And this is a question about the two fourteenth extension. I recall when I was on the planning commission that we were talking about how useful that extension would be for the Canyon Park Subarea Plan. And, and it, so it's not surprising to see it showing up here as a capacity project. I guess my question is, what, have you already like modeled the traffic flow or like the volume that it would be using? And like, how much volume would it be, like, would it be expected to handle in that, in that corridor?
Good question. So yes, we've modeled it. I don't know the exact volume. I will say it takes just enough away from the intersections that are failing, like five twenty-four and five twenty-seven, that it allows that intersection to kind of work. I mean, people think like you have to do dramatic things to make an intersection work. It's often a percentage point that you got to try to get it down in order for it to continue to function, and that's kind of what these are doing. I also want to, again, talk about snapshot in time. This is a twenty-year plan. This is a snapshot in time. I will tell you what the planning commission weighed in on. There's an order of work as well. So one of the things in the Canyon Park Subarea Plan that was talked about was, if you're going to do two fourteenth, Ninth Avenue has to be taken care of first, because there will be more traffic coming. We want to be safer. We want to separate the bikes and the pads before you open up two fourteenth. So we went after Ninth Grant, and we have the first phase design funding for that. So this would be probably a later project. And that doesn't mean you can't go back and reassess your subarea and decide whether there's another way to do that. So again, you're trying to plan for twenty years, but I'm trying to also make sure you understand that this is the best we can do at a certain time, all of us are going to do. It doesn't mean that we can't log things down and say, when we reopen this or we want to do this in the future, because this is good, but not ideal, and we would rather see something else, or, you know, or at least see if we can do something else.
Yeah, I think that's a useful description, especially taking, like, remembering that we expect Canyon Park to redevelop and look a lot different in the next twenty years, too. So capacity will continue to increase as density in, in Canyon Park increases.
Yes, and we're coming off COVID years. That has affected how people work. It has affected traffic. It has affected telecommuting. We don't know if it's going to last. We hope it's going to last. Maybe we can build on that. So the next, to me, the next few years will help us see where we are.
We're chuckling, because Amazon went to five days a week, and this guy is, telecommuting is no longer an option.
Okay, should I move on? Okay, I want to try to get through this and not be too late. So these are the other capacity projects. I'm not going to really go through much of these at all, other than to say, you can see the intersection improvements are kind of a magnitude less. So like two fortieth and thirty-fifth roundabout, we just got design funds for that, but it's like a four-million-dollar project. It's not tens of millions of dollars or anything. So a lot of our projects are corridor projects, but there are some smaller projects. We did get a, I think we did eliminate about three right turn lanes, so like one point three million dollars. We had two of them on two twenty-eighth and one of them on one twenty-fourth that we can make the whole system work. I mean, it would be better with them, but for that money and for the impact, we got rid of those. Okay, so these are the operating programs. I'm going to try to go through them quickly. The top pavement, sidewalk, bridge, safety, crosswalk, comprehensive plan and bike are existing ones. We recommend we keep them. The pavement preservation, that number you see there is basically assuming grants are included. We're very successful in getting grants. We are assuming two point nine million dollars for arterials, which is how much we spend today on arterials, and we're doing good. It's in the PCI seventy-something range, which means it's in a very good spot, and it's not super high maintenance. It's kind of almost optimized, not quite there. We've spent very little on local roads, about three hundred thousand dollars a year. So this amount of money would put about a million dollars a year in the local roads. So it'd help us address at least the worst ones, or at least the not-so-good ones that are more heavily traveled. The rest of them, the existing ones are pretty much at the same level with pre-safe streets and sidewalks levy. I will point out that if the additional funding would likely be funding the bigger corridor projects, but that's where a lot of our ped and bike work is being done. It's not necessarily in the sidewalk program. So the sidewalk program will get, allow us to get just a sidewalk project done. It's not going to be a huge one like two twenty-eighth. It's probably going to be a smaller one that is a high priority in the sidewalk list, but it hasn't been combined with these other bike and safety and resiliency type stuff. Go ahead.
I'll wait till you're done explaining this, and then I have a question.
So the next two are resiliency and traffic equipment. So those are the ones we talked to you in the capital facility plan and budget. Those are the two new programs. The resiliency one, I'll talk about later, but that would help us beef up our program to survive certain things that go on, like if earthquake came on, accidents occur. So we have the emergency response you can't get through and things like that. The traffic equipment asset replacement would help us maintain our system. Whereas in the last few years, a lot of our equipment either got lightning hit, hit by somebody. Insurance doesn't cover everything, and we have to replace it. And it's not just the traffic signals. It's also like the crossing signals, the RRFBs, the flashing beacons and the school beacons. So this just allows us some money to actually replace them if they get hit or they, they're obsolete. The last two are TDMs. Those are the programs to try to get people out of the car. The Canyon Park one is fully funded right now, mostly through grants, and Riot is working on it. We proposing in our comp plan to do a downtown one, and I would suggest we have a TDM program, because the modeling assume we get slightly less vehicle trips because of it, so we want to put it in there to justify that. So if you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question, because these are all, what I'm about to ask you could be viewed as small projects. But throughout Balthol, people complain about people driving the streets too set, too fast. And that's a safety issue. We can't put, I understand roundabouts are a great way to slow people down, but we can't go putting roundabouts and, you know, several roundabouts in all the neighborhoods in Balthol. So probably not within this project, this topic that we're talking about right now. But can we, how are we, where are we plugging in traffic calming in our, in our planning here for transportation in the city?
So that would be the safety. So that's five point six million. That's where we're going to do that. And that would include things like, right now, right now, we have an interdepartmental group, fire, police, public works. We're all talking to each other to try to figure out how to approach this, because like any, everything, you're all zero this for me. There's positives and negatives. So if you put some sort of thing to slow things down, you actually also slow the emergency vehicle down. So if you put too many of them down, then, you know, although the speeds go down and you're safer from that point of view, if somebody in that neighborhood needs an emergency response, it's going to take X number of minutes longer. So we're trying to balance those things. So we're behind a little bit on that. We're trying to catch up. The safety is the one that's going to fund that. And what we're trying to do is get our departments agreed upon the tools available, and then we can start applying, because there has been a tremendous amount of incoming requests for speed humps, flashing beacons, speed, all kinds of... speed humps, flashing beacons, speed signs, all kinds of things. Yes.
Well, the one thing that I've noticed and I, and I don't want to derail us too, too much, but one thing walking through most of Bothell is I noticed beautiful wide streets in residential areas that with big intersections, um, stop signs, I would think, would do a good job slowing people down. If they, you know, if they can't accelerate because they're going to have to slow down at the next block.
So, so this is where we, we rely on people like Riot. Um, there's a balance between certain things that we, our perception are, it would work. In some cases, it actually create um, safety issues. It's, how do I say it? To me, it's almost like a basketball high top shoe. It's like, if you wear a high top, you'll probably save your ankle from a lot of minor injuries. But when you get that big one, it's going to be big. And kind of like that safety sometimes is there. If people rely on a safety system and it's not quite safe for various reasons they may not be aware of, you might be creating a more hazardous situation. So. Yeah, and on curves, people want uh, you know, crossings and curves where there's no line of sight or anything. Oh, just put a flashing beacon. People stop. That's not true. They, they, they can't stop because they're going too fast. They can't see you or all kinds of things occur. So, but that's what the safety program's for. And that's why we wanted to merge the smaller ones into one, because oftentimes they cross over those little programs. And one neighborhood might not want, need just one little thing, but various things in her toolbox. Okay.
I've got a question for you as well, um, about the downtown TDM. Um, so when I attended the, the council conversation uh, last week, there was, m- most of the people in that group were living in the downtown core. Um, and there was a strong kind of consensus of, in the room that parking management is very much wanted and needed in that neighborhood. Does TDM also include parking management?
No. That parking management actually has been in our downtown plan for a long time. It's just been a challenge finding funding for it.
Right.
But it's not, that's not part of the team. Now, parking, in terms of parking management, in terms of, it could be in this particular way. So let's say in the downtown, um, we got to the point where you put meters on there and you could charge people for it. You could use the pro, proceeds to run your downtown TDM forever. So you could turn that into incentives for somebody riding a bus. So it could be in that sense, but the TDM program itself doesn't really manage parking. It relies on certain um, things like maybe our comp plan considering uh, maximizing the amount of parking you have to make it tougher to have parking downtown. And therefore people will have to look for other ways to get to downtown. Um, that's not really the TDM program per se. It's more of a planning thing.
Council member Aldrick, so I'll also add that within the council, city council, um, three-year priorities, as you may recall, moving in and around Bothell includes one, uh, priority for developing strategies to better manage parking in order to enhance parking availability. And for council consideration, that includes um, pursuing increased parking enforcement in downtown where we have two-hour parking limits and permit only parking solutions. So that's something that I believe on the work plan is coming back next year.
I was going to ask you that in our one-on-one tomorrow. So thanks for the answer.
Okay. Going to keep moving. And it's not working. Oh, sorry. Now we're going to go back. Sorry. Okay. So these projects are already in our, the draft CFP that you saw. So they are somewhat funded, like Main Street, Festival Street, you know, about Hundred Second Avenue Bridge. We just got a grant. There are four sidewalk projects that were still outstanding. We don't know if we're going to get a grant. We've applied for it, so we want to keep them on top of there. The FEMA repairs is funded, the RFBs is funded, and the four at the very bottom are all funded by Sound Transit hundred percent. So we recommend that keeping these. And you can kind of see, other than the bridge, they're not really aggregate that much. They're one million, two million dollars here and there. So over a twenty-year period, it's not super impactful. Okay. This is where it starts getting interested. So one of our sources of um, projects was the 2015 comp plan. And we're recommending the top three get funded. Um, stage four, this is one of those that I'm making a little bit of change in recommendation. Stage four basically is between a hundred and first and Kaysner Way, five twenty-two. From a vehicle point of view, when we lengthen that bridge, we want to widen those lanes and make it safer. We probably look at managed access as well. I would like to, I propose to put a shared use path on the south side. Our bike plan does not have one, but I think that would be a good connection point to get that side of the city to the regional trial. And that cost 5.9 million includes that. So that's a little bit different from the bike plan. North Creek Trail, section four, you were just there today. We're pretty much done. Two forty-second, two oh-fourth is a private project that is being completed, so don't worry about that. Thirty-fifth Avenue was actually in your CFP right now. Um, it's not a capacity project. It would go from two lanes to three lanes. You can't really con, convince anybody that's going to increase capacity. Uh, we had it there as a multimodal project. So what I did was I had it scored with our priority. And it scored a sixty-six. And the projects that we're funding are scoring in the eighties and seventies. So my recommendation at this point is not to fund that one at this point. And you'll see the rest as we go down. Fitzgerald Road Improvements is Twenty-seventh Avenue between two twenty-eighth and two fortieth. There's the trail on one side and there's some gaps in the sidewalk on the other. This was some minor road widening and filling those gaps. It doesn't score very high. We're not recommending we include that one either. So those are two old projects that we propose not to carry right now into the next twenty years. These, oh.
With those um, older projects, and I, I realize that this might not be data that you have, but I imagine there are some community stakeholders that, that raised some concerns that, are we reaching out to them to give them updates on the deprioritizing?
No, we're not. And I think, I think the feeling that the staff has is we're redoing our comprehensive plan and this is all open. And this is the venue to revisit these projects because we have different needs and everything. And you will see as I go through the sub area ones, I'm proposing we keep those, even if we feel like they may not score high, because that is very specific to a sub area plan. We should go through a sub area update in order to, you know, revisit those projects.
Thank you.
On the thirty-fifth Avenue project, does that mean that um, we won't be getting sidewalks along that stretch of roadway through any other program as well? Or is it just the third lane in the middle?
I would say likely not the sidewalks because you also want bike facilities. And then you start just doubling up and then you're into the tens of millions of dollars.
Okay. Do you know the development that's currently there across from Evergreen Church? Are they going to put in?
Yes.
They will put in bike and pedestrian?
On their side of the road.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So again, that's a, that's an example of where that development can help us. So at some point in the future, let's say ten, twelve, fifteen years from now, we see it and there's just a little gap there. We may reevaluate and say, hey, instead of for forty-five million dollars, we have to do the whole thing. Fifteen years later, if we toss in five million dollars, we can finish the whole corridor. That would be the adjustment we would do.
Okay. The, there's a couple houses that are relatively new. If there's no frontage improvements there, does that mean that they paid a fee in lieu of doing frontage? Or does that mean that we perhaps said?
A lot, yeah.
You're not doing, I, I guess they rebuilt like entirely new houses, so I'm curious. Those ones didn't get frontage on them. I'm just curious why that could be, or if there was a fee in lieu perhaps?
I would have to check. I'm not sure. A couple of things could happen. If you're talking recently, some, some of that is that proportionality thing. I mean, if you're building one house and you have 300 feet of frontage, the cost of that 300 feet is probably not proportional.
Okay. Okay. Cool. I'll follow up later. It's irrelevant to this. So thank you.
Uh, let's see. Okay. So this is the sub area projects for the downtown. And these are the ones that are not capacity. So one eighty-fifth, we're, from a capacity point of view, we're pretty much there. Main Street enhancement is really the second phase of the Main Street project, which would be an economic project. Uh, we do have a hundred fourth bike lanes, uh, bike parking program and Valley View. So we are recommending keeping them. We are going to, I, I believe we're going to revisit the downtown sub area soon. That would be the time to revisit this list. Oh, sure.
Okay. Um, and I don't mean to step on toes of a fellow council member who's a neighbor on Valley View. Kind of, sort of, um, around the corner on Valley View. Um, what is it that you are considering on Valley View Drive? I know that the sidewalk goes partway down because the university paid for it and then it ends. Living on that hill, I have an observation.
No. So right now for Valley View, that cost estimate includes um, sidewalk, I believe, and a greenway bike. So the bike would be on the road. Which to me makes perfect sense as you get closer to campus, less so as you get to Kaysner. So they might have to figure that out a little.
Well, especially with the cemetery, you don't have a place to put a sidewalk. But.
I, you can put a sidewalk there.
Okay.
In, in the right of way. Yeah.
On the south side?
Haven't picked. We would just say a sidewalk and a greenway. And that's what the cost is right there.
I, I just have, I, I know as you are, okay, I'm good at the compass, but this is, as you are going west-ish, southwest-ish, towards downtown. The sidewalk ends and people have to, for safety and.
Yes.
And pe, there, there's a lot of parked cars.
Yes.
Um, people will cross.
That's on the south side.
The south side. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. And uh, people will cross and then walk the other side just for visibility.
Right.
That um, as long as the campus keeps that access, they have a gated access. As long as the campus keeps that closed, it's pretty navigable. The only dangerous spot is that section where.
Totally, totally correct.
Yeah. Cause I mean, I walk at all times of day, except at two o'clock in the morning, but all times of day and it's, people navigate it.
Right. So like I said, I think the greenway part, as you get closer to campus, I've walked it. I've walked in the middle of the street in the middle of the day and felt perfectly safe. As you get closer to Valley View, because Kaysner is so busy and because of the odd angle, it becomes a little dicier. So we'd have to figure that out. So there is some funding there to try to figure it out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And in like a hundred fourth bike lanes, there's really no room for bike lanes there. It's such a narrow thing. So again, I put in funding to try to see what we could do. But again, I think we're going to open the door on this in a few months, so we can revisit these. Okay. So Canyon Park is a, quite a long list. Um, these are all non-capacity. Doesn't mean that it's not going to affect traffic. It's just not huge. Um, the only thing I would say here is remember that a lot of Canyon Park is still private roads. It's not public roads. So even if tomorrow we wanted to do something, it would be very difficult because we don't own the roads right now. Uh, but these are the list of mitigation projects that, as we went through that process, everybody saw. And um, to council member Dodd's point, if we're going to undo that, we should go through that process again. Um, the only reason we feel more comfortable with the comp plan ten years ago is because we are going through a comp plan process. So. Okay. Um, these two projects are a little bit interesting and require, unfortunately, we talked to you a little bit. So there are intersections throughout our city that are not necessarily on main arterials or are part of our measurement for level of service. So some of those are like Kaysner and Main, which is a four-way stop. Another one is like um, a hundred and second and one eighty-fifth, which is a T intersection. But if you're going across the Hundred Second Avenue Bridge in the morning in one direction, sometimes you're waiting in line. And if you're coming back, you might not be able to take a left turn to get onto one eighty-fifth. So not necessarily um, capacity issues. It's just more congestion and inconvenience. But like Riot says, sometimes when you have too much congestion, it becomes a safety issue. So as an example, on Kaysner and Main Street, we periodically get people saying it's, you need to do something. It's a four-way stop, but not everybody's stopping because by the time they get to the top, they're so wild up, they just go. So that might be an intersection because in all our modeling, no matter which alternative we pick, that intersection fails. That might be something in the twenty years we want to address. So what I did was I put some money in the pot. One for downtown because there is a number, number of intersections that might come up as an issue. Doesn't mean we can address them all, but it would give us some seed money to address. And citywide, there's at least one. If you look at Brickyard Road and one sixtieth, that's not a signalized intersection. That one we might want to look at at some point. Um, so I'm, again, I'm trying to put some funding in there just to allow us some flexibility over the twenty years.
Yeah. Um, I'm seeing the word circulation and I have a vague recollection, recollection that we were going to do a circulation study of downtown. Did we ever get that done?
We never really got that done, but um, Kendra, we had Kendra do like a little modeling effort as part of our comprehensive plan. And when we go through the downtown sub area.
Perfect.
We will have some information.
Perfect. So when we're looking at downtown as a whole, we'll have that.
Yeah. And that intersection will probably come up.
Okay.
Quick question about, um, sorry, and this is back one slide, but the North Creek Trail. Yeah, North Creek Trail. Uh, there's a section in the Business Park where it crosses two twentieth, just after you hit the end of two hundred, it crosses two twentieth. And there's like a missing connection there. Is that in any plans? That, that's net?
That's that one.
Perfect. Thank you. I was going to say, I, I got the most confused. Um, when I was going through that, I was super confused about where I was going and I was wondering if I had missed the, the section across the street. And I was always wondering. So thank you for putting that in there.
Yep. And if that parcel develops first, the old teacher's parcel, that might be able to take care of it well. So again, that's that balance between, you know, private participation and, yeah. So. Um, okay. Okay. So this is where the, the scoring really starts coming in. This is where we combine projects into, you know, ped projects, bike projects, safety projects, resiliency. And that's where you see the two twenty-eight corridor. Um, it ranked really high. The whole corridor is ranked a little bit differently along the corridor. It ranks from eighty-one to seventy-two points. I think the corridor on the east side is the most highly ranked because it has no sidewalks or anything. Um, but the hundred fourteen million you see there is assuming we do fifty percent of it. So again, you'd wind up with sidewalks on both sides from city limit to city limit. But the ped, the bike facility wouldn't be protected for half of it. Okay. Hundred Second Avenue Shared Use Path scored high. It's already in your CFP plan. We already got design funds grant for it this, this spring. Semamish River Ped Bridge, Bike Bridge scored a seventy. It's in your CFP. We're assuming you want it. It's in there. Uh, Ninety-Sixth Avenue Ped Bike Crossing, uh, a woman today who came up with um, the concerns, that's something we're looking at. And you see it, it says in the safety program. So we are using the safety program to try to come up with a solution for that. Um, I will just tell you, it's not as easy as it looks because where you put that crossing, like I said, is very critical. If you put it too close to the driveway in the park, you're right on a bend where people start merging two lanes into one southbound. If you put it too far south, there's no sidewalk on the other side. So how do you resolve all that? And that's what, that's there for, to try to figure that out. And the timing is not twenty years. We're trying to do that short term. So, but we're keeping it in there. East Riverside Drive Trail actually didn't score that as high as many others, sixty-five, but it, we've heard so much about it from both planning commission and council. It's in your CFP, so the recommendation is to leave it there. And what I did for context is try to show you other projects that, what they would score. So like two fortieth West Abatha River Highway from Safeway toward, you know, Shelter View to the, to the west. Uh, Winita Woodinville Way and one sixtieth, that main corridor. Those all score in the, kind of the high to mid sixties. And all these other ones that we all would love to put sidewalks and protected bike lanes on. Some of them are through downtown, like the hundred and nineteenth, some are up the Holly Hills. Um, they're not scoring as high as some of these others. They're scoring in the low sixties and the high fifties. So right now, these are not funded.
Can I just make an observation? I'll try to keep it short. Um, the Ninety-Sixth Avenue from the, um, that we had heard from the gal. Uh, and then East Riverside Drive Trail also, I mean, we have a rural vulnerable and the kind of invisible population there that has issues. And it just struck on, it struck me while she was talking is that on the south side of the slough, we're having increased, I mean, we're, we're thinking about Towntown. We're thinking about Canyon Park and those areas that feed into it. Um, but we have kind of a sleeping, I don't want to say time bomb, but we have kind of a sleeping problem that's growing on the south side of the slough, which is what the gal was talking to us tonight about. on the south side of the slough, which is what the gal has talked to us tonight about, and East Riverside Drive, so I appreciate both of those things on there. I think they're, they're small, but they're pretty significant, so thank you for doing that.
So, again, as we go through, just try to keep it all, look at a tall, high picture, but you can kind of see the cost as well. The East Riverside Drive is fairly long, 8,000 linear feet, so $32 million. The bridge itself is not just the bridge, it would actually do a portion of the trail on the south side to receive, otherwise, nobody can get to the bridge safely. The shared use path is $12 million, it's not that expensive. 228th by far is, like, one of the bigger projects.
I was actually going to ask you about that 228th project. Have you estimated the additional cost if, on that 50% that's not protected, we did some kind of, like, safety precautions, like bollards, or, or like, an extruded curb or something, so that, like, it's, the scale of it is, is kind of low impact, but, like, you can have some protection for bicyclists there? And I know flexi-posts are also an option, but they're not my favorite, so I'm putting them at the end of my list.
Thank you.
I would second that request. I see a lot of people going west on 228th, and they hit the Business Park light, and they drive in the bike lane to take a right into the Business Park, and it's, I see it all, like, every time I'm down there, and it's really dangerous, and I would love to see something similar, if we can keep people out of the bike lane. I don't know how to do that, but I agree.
Okay. I can't recall, but that's certainly something we could add to the scope. It's not a large cost in the scale of 20 years, and 850 million dollars, it's a blink, so I think we can add that to the scope.
Thank you for being willing to do that, I think it makes a big difference.
Let's see where we are, okay, those are the ones, right, so we do have some safety projects, and, again, you can see the 80s, they score pretty high. 120th is not much, it's primarily trying to slow cars down and taking care of some crossings and things. Same thing on 160th, there's nearer school, there's a couple side streets that we've got to take care of. The biggest one here is the 524 Malkbee Road, and the only reason I'm saying that is you see, you see it under safety and you can't visualize, but that essentially puts a shared use trail on the south side of, on the east side of Botha River Highway, if that makes sense. And that would essentially put a PED and bike trail along that whole corridor, and then if we can get crossings at least one or two places, then you actually have a facility, even if you don't have a sidewalk, all the way on the, on the north side. So, that one scored fairly high, it is a little pricier, but not too bad. That one is a state route, trying to really lean on Wash Dot on their complete streets program, there's a lot of pavement out there, if we can shove the road to the north, we can hopefully get a fairly cheap thing on the bottom side. Resiliency, you don't see much numbers there, the top, I'm going really fast now, the top five of them are going to be part of the program that we're asking you to fund. That's backup power for signals, flood detection, traffic cameras. This Way Needed Down Trees is working with a private parcel, property owner to try to trim trees so that it doesn't fall in the roadway, and adaptive signal system. The bottom through, the 120th is a stormwater project at this point, and the bottom three don't rank as high as the others, because either there's alternate routes, or it's not as significant, like, you can't pass it or something like that, so. So, what we did, remember, I talked about the process, so in addition to the accessibility points and criteria, one of the things we did was we overlaid the project on maps, and this is our safety map, and you can kind of see our hotspots are 527 north of 228, 228 itself, and some in the downtown area. So, a lot of our projects are actually addressing those hotspots, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to put a map on this. More importantly, or just as important, equity, we used two maps, we put all the projects on this map, which is social vulnerability, and tried to see, you know, was it balanced out, did it, was it all in one area that it shouldn't be, should it be spread throughout the city? And then Rayd came up with this map, which I think is cool, he did it for resiliency, but it also shows where manufactured home communities are, as well as essential facilities, so it also is a good indicator that your projects are kind of addressing as much as you possibly can. So, the process was, again, to use this mapping and take a look at it as a whole, not just to use scoring criteria. So, from a Planning Commission point of view, when we, we had a great discussion, one of the things that came out is they would like to revisit 214th and 20th Extension Projects at some point in the future, as, as part of revisiting that subarea, because it does go through critical areas. They did discuss the protected bike facility along 228 versus eliminating, balancing it with getting more projects or less other projects in other areas. There was no result, it was a difficult discussion, it is a difficult discussion. They did prefer separate bike facilities and pedestrian facilities, but I, I believe the consensus kind of was they were open to shared use facilities where it didn't make sense. They appreciated consideration of equity, that it was, everything was kind of data-driven, and they supported continued community engagement. So, these are some of the questions, I guess, that I would like to ask, and we tried to talk about it by talking about projects, and the first one is 228th Street, the corridor approach, and it's really that particular project, but the goal could be to finish the whole thing as protected bike lanes, or if we think it's a high cost and that funding could be spread onto other bike projects, that would be a decision as well. And then the other five are basically the modifications I talked about, shared use path versus bike lanes where it made sense, protected bike lanes. The multimodal project, 527, I just want to point out, that's going from 524 to 220th, and that's going to widen the roadway, where there's, sometimes there's intermittent three lanes, it's not all the way through, so we want to put three lanes. But, we'd also put shared use path and bike lanes on that facility as well. That's not in the bike plan. The reason we're putting that in there is because when we talk to those other stakeholders, everybody to the north of us, up to South Everett, they're continuing to use 527 as their bike corridor, because they really don't have parallel routes right now. So, it kind of makes sense for us to take it at least to 220th, so you can at least get to the transit and into Phillips on the other way and into the Business Park. So, that's been added in, and that's unfortunately more cost for that project, and it deviates from the bike plan a little bit. Stage four I talked about, and 104th Bike Lanes, right now, it says bike lanes, I'm not sure how to put that on there. I think I would propose a shared use path versus a green, greenway. So, those are kind of, I think, I mean, any question is open, any comment is open, want to hear, but these are some of the things that I would like to hear from you, because it kind of sets a trend in how we put these projects together.
For 214th and 20th, would the shared use path be more environmentally friendly, given the critical, okay, that's kind of what I was hoping, is it's a compromise between both funding and, because we don't want to just build over all of our wetlands, but at the same time, we are constrained in that part of the city right now, for sure. I really appreciated the, the heat map a couple slides back, and you don't have to go back, but it's, it's one thing, I think, to, at this point, I've said it enough means, like, obviously, that's where I grew up, in that part of the city, and to think this is different from other parts of the city that I go to, walking to the bus near my home versus walking from the bus stop to the library as a kid, I was like, this is a lot easier down here. And so, it's, it's nice to, to see that that's being evaluated, so I really appreciate that.
I'm gonna, I'm actually going back to the Planning Commission input slide as well. I really appreciated the Planning Commission's discussion on these topics, especially around the critical areas of 214th and 20th. And so, I guess, the one question that I have about that is, well, what you just mentioned about adding the 220th connection, but multimodal path, and adding that to the bike plan, I'm not going to complain that you're adding projects to the bike plan.
Those two, I'm changing the bike plan, because right now, there's psychotrac directional on each side, and I would put a shared use path on one side.
Okay, so it's a change, it's not in the station?
It is a change for that one, yeah.
Without looking at it closer, I think I'm okay with that. I might want to look at it closer, but I, and so, when it, like, say, I agree with Planning Commission that, that I also prefer separate, separate bike and pedestrian facilities, but I am open to it then being shared use. Like, there are some places where it makes sense. One of the things that Planning Commission also brought up was some of the concern around when you exit a shared use facility, and then you, you enter it, and then you exit it, and how that sometimes can be awkward if you're having to cross traffic to do it. I remember them talking about that and expressing some concern, and so, as long as, like, the road markings are very clear, and bikes have maybe light, can work with lights to be able to safely cross, like, it, like, I'd like to minimize those types of kind of interchanges for a bike, but there are some places where a shared use facility makes sense because you're not having to do those kinds of entrances and exits. Hopefully, I might not be using the right terminology, but I hope you understand what I mean.
Yes, and I think when we get, when, if you're riding a bike on 214th and you get to Botha River Highway, that crossing is important. But, remember, we also got North Creek on that corner as well, so it's actually tying into the North Creek Trail there. To me, 214th, it makes sense on the north side, because right now, most of the wetland is, the north side, a lot of it is a wetland, there might be a couple developments that occur there, but most of it will be wetland. To me, that means you won't be crossing anything, so that, that's a plus. On 20th, if I were envision actually going through that wetland, I would probably put the shared use path on the east side, because on the west side would be probably an access to Fred Meyer. So, you would want to avoid that at all costs and be on the other side of the road. So, it does make sense in that sense.
Great.
We're not quite sure how we would write this in, I think, you know, we would probably summarize how this, how we cost this out in our assumptions, and maybe say we, we are mending the bike plan for these facilities. Another way could be to say that we are open to flexibility in certain cases where you can really minimize impact on wetlands, and, you know, it makes sense from a safety point of view, or something like that. That would at least give us some flexibility, and saying that when we have the plan, if, you know, it kind of works. If I can't do that, I have to add those additional costs in there, and then I got to take something out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did the Planning Commission also request, along the non-protected parts of 228, that there might be other ways to protect those lanes, like we talked about earlier, like the bollards and...
I can't remember.
Yeah, I don't, she, she had.
No, no, the Planning Commission, I can't remember.
No, they, they did not.
Okay, I wonder, like, could you take that back to them and see what they think of the, you know, the additional extra cost of adding something like bollards or extruded curb to protect it, and see if that gets at some of their concerns around the 228?
Okay.
Like, is that kind of like a happy, a happy place in between? Okay. And then, I think that was my thoughts on that section, so thank you.
The thing that's still unclear to me is how did you reach the 850 million dollar, like, why is that the cap? Why is it 600 million, why isn't it 100 million? Like, why is 850, eh, 1 billion or 600 million?
Yeah, okay.
Why?
No, that...
Yeah, 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 why, like, why is that the value that you reached?
Great question, so...
It's, it's about to adjourn, so.
Let me go back, let me see if I can find this. Try to, oops, sorry. Okay. So, the city funds, the transportation impact funds, the private, those two are fairly fixed. So, we get a certain amount of REIT, if we're going to use REIT, and transportation impact fees, like I told you, we did the model, we estimated the new trips generated by all the new land use, that's limited by how much growth we're going to have. The only other way you're going to increase that is increase your actual fee, which we don't, we don't want to be out of line in terms of, yeah. So, those two are fairly fixed. So, then, other agency, not much there, we're going to try as best as possible, but it's not a large source. Private development, again, I made estimates what I felt development would occur, so on 185th and Beardsley, most of that's going to be built by private development, on 228, not so much, maybe toward the shopping center, but on the ends, probably not much. So, that percentage is a lot less, private development more, so.
Okay.
That's my, really, what I did was, I looked at the federal, the projects and the federal grants and the state grants that we could get, and I literally looked at every little project, and I tried to estimate, as a whole, what I thought we could do.
That makes sense. Thank you.
For 228th, I'm not sure we can get more money if we're 228th, even if it doubles the cost. I would have to probably cut it up in eight pieces, and I'm not sure how well that's...
But, in 10 years, federal grants for, like, let's say, they might change something policy-wise, and we might, like, and then that will, at that time, that council's going to determine, are you, you know, through all around.
And I would also say, this is a snapshot, so five years from now, if there are sources of funding, it has changed, yeah.
Yeah, okay, makes sense, thank you. And I'm, I'm generally okay with the compromise, the trade-offs we have to make, to maintain, I mean, seems like a good estimate, and if that's within the range, if you have to make a shared use versus a protected bike lane, for example, if that's it, or adding an extra X, you know, miles or, or meters, whatever, of sidewalk, I mean, seems like a good trade-off from in my, it seems like to me that's what it is.
Yeah, so for these, like I said, 228th, probably about 100 million, 20th and 214th together is probably another 50 million. Unfortunately, I added probably a little bit of money for stage four and 104th and 527, but not, let's say I added 10 million or whatever. If we had to find that other 100-something million, some of the projects that might go at the lower scoring end would be East Riverside Drive, that PED Bridge, maybe the safety project on 524, which means the shared use path on the south side of 524, those are the projects that probably would be cut. So, I think if 220, again, it's, there's no right, wrong, good or bad, but the trade-off of not getting your bike facility across all protected 228 is, I believe, you buy some other bike facilities in other locations, yeah.
I'm supportive of the flexibility, I think it makes sense for maintaining critical areas and not expanding too far into the wetlands. I also think 228th, it's hard sell to me to rip up perfectly good sidewalk to put in new infrastructure, when there's a lot of parts of the city that don't have any infrastructure. I, I think about that a lot, when they were doing North Creek Trail, Section Four, and we were ripping out the sidewalks, put in the shared use path, my first thought was, like, why are we tearing a perfectly good sidewalk that's so hard to get in the first place? It makes sense there, so I'm not mad about that at all, but I just think about that, and I think about other areas of our city that doesn't have the infrastructure, and people who really wish they did. When I lived at 31st and 228th, my neighborhood had put in a section of, of sidewalk, but there was a big gap between the neighbor next door and then the Business Park, and I used to have to walk with a stroller in the bike lane, because the stroller could not take the bumpy rocks and the stuff like that, I just wished I had a sidewalk there. So, I think about people elsewhere that are facing the same thing, and for, for me to say, like, no, we should spend another 100 million dollars and rip and replace when there's need elsewhere, and there's other projects that need to be done, I, I can't in good conscience do that, so I appreciate you coming with the idea of shared use paths, doing 50%, making it better than what's there now, maybe looking at the whole section and saying, well, it's here in this section, but it's not safe, and we could rip and replace this small portion of it where it makes sense to increase safety. But, overall, I, I appreciate the thought of shared use paths, and I think what you presented makes a lot of sense, and I know by the time we get to some of these projects, there'll be a whole new council here, and you'll probably be talking about this all over again, so that, things could change, so at this point in time, I am in full agreement that it makes sense to be flexible.
So, quick question, and then a comment. On page 164, there was next steps, and the final environmental impact statement, is it, how do you, I would say FIES or FEES, do you guys abbreviate that? I mean, when you're talking about it?
No, F E I S.
Oh, yeah, F E I S, okay, okay.
I don't know why.
Is expected to be issued in October or November, do we know any dates on that yet? Is expected to be issued in October or November. Do we know any dates on that yet? Like, beginning of November-ish?
Yeah.
November-ish, okay. And then the other thing that I, my council members to my left talking about being, finding the flexibility agreeable, I agree. I, I just wanted to add a comment that may be a little bit on, I don't know. At one point you called it our projects, I said, you said your projects, which I appreciate so much that you recognize that, you know, city council values some of these projects. But it doesn't also escape me that this is your proj, your projects. Because you've put so much thought and consideration into it. So I'm just going to own the word our projects because this is team effort here.
Oh, yeah.
And I just appreciate so much thought and, like I was telling our city manager yesterday, when we were talking about being, I, being resilient and prepared for tough times is something that is always in the back of my mind. But what you do, I have no idea what the, that looks like. And I just appreciate so much that you've identified what those are that help us be resilient. So keep, keep doing the strong work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I won't wax poetic at this hour, but thank you for presenting these. I'm also not going to disagree with my colleagues about the flexibility approach, but I do want to put a little bit of nuance on it. In that, we should try and be flexible to get as many projects rolled out as we can. That's a really valuable goal. But if we don't do a project to a certain standard or we don't, you know, if we compromise too far on a project, how do we know that it's not really worth just skipping it altogether? For example, a neighboring city on Simon's Road on the south side of our city installed bike lanes, separated bike lanes on their portion, but stopped halfway up the hill. And so when, like, the amount of use that those bike lanes are getting is basically non-existent because it, it has to, like, wait. And this is like, obviously, there's other, you know, intersecting jurisdictions, there's like property rights issues. But if we're not going to make sure that a, uh, uh, infrastructure is accessible for all ages and abilities, which is one of the premises that our bike plan was founded on, we need to, like, be okay with the compromise that we're, that we're, that we're putting forward. So I want to be very cautious by saying, like, let's cut the two twenty eighth project in half when we don't know where are those gaps going to be, what are those pain points going to be? And how can we, are there any possible ways that we can make sure that, you know, it's going to be as accessible for the most amount of people as possible? Because if we're going to be investing even like half the amount of the project, that's still significant. And so I want to make sure that, you know, one of the things that we hear all the time is like Bothell has no sidewalks. Bothell always has these issues with sidewalks and it's because of our patchwork approach. And so when we're signing up for flexibility, we're also signing up for another generation of Bothellites saying that we don't have a safe and protected network of, of bike lanes. And so that's kind of painful to me because it seems like we have so much right away for cars. And when, if we're trying to move people rather than cars, these projects that we're looking for resiliency, that we're looking for safety, kind of all wrap up into, you know, that, the twenty percent of right away that really can move people. And so it's painful to me to say like, yeah, just, let's be flexible, let's, you know, cut it down. But at the same time, we're getting more projects, so that's, that's good in and of itself too. So there's some nuance here. I do agree, yeah, let's explore some ways to be creative on, you know, those big projects. Obviously, you know, the, the shared use pathways are a great way to protect the environment and also maintain on those, like, you know, minor collectors. But when we're talking about like a, a bike superhighway, two twenty eighth has the potential for that. And we don't have a lot of east-west routes in the city for bikes. And that's kind of a pain point that we've brought up in the bike plan. And I just don't, I don't want to like, I don't want to cut it off, cut the, the project off without knowing, you know, what we're compromising on. So I'm really cautious, but yeah.
So I'm not, I, I get it. And when you said it's ours, it kills me when we can't finish a project and we have to get creative. But so two twenty eighth, twentieth and two fourteenth are a little different. We're literally asking for those two projects whether shared use path would be okay. And if they are, we would probably amend the bike plan. Two twenty eighth is a matter of when it's going to get finished. I don't recommend at all, our design standards will reflect the final facility. So if a developer comes in, they're not going to not have to do anything on that frontage. Even if it has a sidewalk and an on-lane bike, they would have to rebuild that thing, okay? It's a matter of finishing that facility throughout. Another option would be finish half of it. Another option is finish it all, but some of these other projects would go away. And to me, those are kind of the, the three decision points, which I don't have a great answer either. So if I, if we don't do half of it, there's communities on both sides that need it. And they don't have sidewalks on both sides. So that seems a little challenging. And I can't just build a sidewalk because once I build the sidewalk, in order to do that frontage, I have to build the bike lane. The right away is not an issue, believe it or not, where I don't, there's not that much right away we have to buy for this whole project. I think some on the west side maybe. So it's not a matter of buying land and space. It's really a cost of rebuilding it. You know, I have to rebuild the curb gutter planter, protected bike lane sidewalk, that's the cost. So even if there's right away there, it's, 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 there's still that cost. So that's the challenge and that's the feedback I wanted. Would we prefer to see a complete sidewalk and half protected along the entire length? Finish the whole thing on one side, but not the other, or, or this piece and this piece, whichever, you know. Maybe they don't have sidewalks here, so we do this quarter section and that quarter section. Or finish the whole thing and find the money that we're short, we have to take out some other projects. That, that's the only three I can see and there's, there's another way to do it. And I'm trying to get a feel for which way, none of them are perfect, aren't great. But I'm trying to get a feel for which way we would want to go.
I think the consensus that I've been hearing tonight is to go forward with a flexible approach. I'm just also saying that, that flexible approach is a trade off.
Yes.
And it's one that we're going to be living down for a generation.
Yes.
And.
Yes. And I would also say though, and I understand that, believe me. I would also say though, you're not giving up your vision though. Because your vision is eventually Bothell is going to have protected bike lanes on these streets. You will get there because you're not going to change your design standard. We're going to hold people to that. We just can't do this much in twenty years. We can do this much if, you know, other projects elsewhere are important to us too. That's, that's the hard decision. I wouldn't give up the, the vision and it's the length of the vision that's hard to grasp.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, it is, it is. I get it.
May I add something in here? I guess you brought in a really good thinking for me to, when, maybe when you're leaving the bike lane into a shared use path, it's not much of an issue because the bike is out of the way. So, but when they're coming back, you know. So things when, it's going to be minor design considerations, relatively very inexpensive. It's not a hundred million dollar projects now. It is just minors, like maybe assuring the side distance is available so that you don't have trees blocking bikes coming into the lane, making sure that we have like minor design changes, maybe additional signage, buffered lanes, flexible pipes, whatever it is, to assure that everybody is aware now there is a bicycle coming back into the travel lane. It's not in the travel lane, it's, it's in the bike lane next to the travel lane. So, you know, again, so there are certain things that can be done that does not have to cost an arm and a leg to get it done. And at the same time, you're trying to build the city so that in our traffic model, we're assuming multimodal transportation. And if we don't have at all any facility, people are not going to use it. And if you don't go on one, two twenty eight, you may not have to go anywhere else because that was your, your stop point. So you may not use the facilities as much as we want to use it in terms of multi-modals. So providing something that as long as it's safe and we're doing everything possible, proper crossings and signage and pavement markings and all of that, maybe that might be somewhat, you know, a flexible design so that, you know, environment is being saved. At the same time, we are proposing safe alternative modes of transportation.
Hey, hey, Councilmember Curd, I want to make sure you're done before I jump in. Okay, cool. Honestly, it was a great timing because a lot of what I was thinking, Councilmember Curd brought up. I did end up saying too early that I was for the shared use pass. I still am. I do want to be clear though, that to me, it, it doesn't matter if it's separate bike and pedestrian facilities. It's more that there is some kind of safety thing between the cars and the non-car people.
Yep.
Yeah, because that's, that's what keeps me off of it. And then, just because we've been talking about two twenty eight so much, with the patchwork stuff, one thing that comes up sometimes is I think about just, oh, directions, just east of second, between like second and fourth. There's like one little twofer of two brand new-ish homes. And like the sidewalk is like way apart from the rest of like the shoulder that's there. And I do see a lot of people just like, instead of veering over like six feet or whatever to go to that sidewalk, they just stay in the shoulder because it's like what? So the ways we can encourage that kind of stuff and like fix those weird patchworky problems that pop up would be great. Having also flipped myself off a Lime scooter at a weird sidewalk transition once, like just stuff like that when you're going faster than you walk on, on one or more wheels, gets kind of dicey. So as we, as we revisit those, just, even if it's just someone from your team just taking a bike down the corridor to be like, oh, that's weird when you're, you know, yeah.
I think one of the things we're going to be doing is doing, updating our design standards and bikes, one of them. We purposely not doing intersections right now because if you try to read how to do an intersection, there's just a lot of information and they're not necessarily all the same. A lot of them are dependent on if you have a crossing bike facility, no crossing bike facility, different kind of bike, you know. So a lot of different things. One of the things that I think we've already pointed out, voids involved in that is the transitions. So we're going to try to educate people why we do get patchwork and why, yes, it looks kind of funny. But no, we don't want to tell somebody you don't have to do anything because then they're not participating as part of that private, you know, funding. But we do need to come up with transition, better designs. And I think if it's not in there already, whatever we're not touching, we should look at ways that we can make that one safer. And those are things like you talked about, the vehicles. So one of the things we're looking at in design standards is length as well. So if we can squeeze, then we can provide a little bit more room. It's not perfect, but in the interim, at least it's a lot better, so.
The other thing I was going to ask about in the, the overall funding, sometimes I'll encounter, whether it's like a sandwich board sign or people's like actual like recology bins on the sidewalk. And I'm kind of the queen of just getting off my bike and moving them where they're supposed to be. But I think if we, I know, I think it was Kirkland did a, what I understand to be a moderately successful initiative to be like, don't put your bins on the sidewalk, people walk there. And just kind of stuff like that would be really helpful too.
Okay.
This, this stuff is going to come back with more design. I, I know you're asking a high level, do, which path do we take in terms of flexibility? Plus additional eye on safety and these things. But is this stuff going to come back again at some point for us to take a look at?
If, if the consensus it looks about right, then it's going to stay pretty much like this. I think we will update some of the descriptions to make sure we get in, you know, don't just work under fifty percent, that's going to be brand new, work under fifty percent that's there and see what you can do. That, that kind of stuff will change. But other than that, if it looks about right, then that's about what it's going to look like at this point. Now, I heard just going back to the planning commission, which I think, you know, we're going to go back to the planning commission for other sections if we, we can talk to them maybe about, a little bit about where you guys wound up with this. That would be good. So one other thing that we're going to do is Kendra's putting together a website. At this point where we are, we don't want to ask, oh, is this project good? Do you want, is there a project we're missing? We, we can't do that. That's just not good expectations of anybody. So we're going to, we promised them we'd show them the project list, so we're going to show the project list. It's going to probably look similar since it seems like this, the general trend. What we will ask them, and Kendra's being very careful, we'll probably ask them a few questions. And this is stuff you guys can contribute to as well. It's like, how's it look? Did we miss anything? Is there something in the future you would like us to consider? If there is more funding, is there something you would want us to consider? So things like that. And somehow we're going to figure out how to memorialize it so it's not on a, in a file somewhere in an engineer's computer, but appendix, whatever, twenty-three or something. So at least when we pop it open again, there's that starting point. So that should be rolled out in Octoberish.
Around, really October. We're working closely with community development on that.
Yeah.
So we're using your existing platform that your community is accustomed to using, so.
So that'll be kind of the last piece for transportation element, kind of closing the loop with everybody and saying, we heard you, here's what it's going to look like. And again, we'll give them a little bit of opportunity to provide us input about the future in case that, you know, there's a great idea or a big concern out there.
And that would be on the Engage Bothell platform?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
All right, I think that's it.
Got everything you need?
I think so.
Final comments? No, I'm lying, I'm kidding, adjourned.